What does the ballot look like?
Town council, as amended, would be the same number as the default budget.
So they'll have a choice of voting on the same number?
Either one wins.
Right.
So Dave, you've already figured that default is no jobs. If you go below default, you're looking at positions.
Well, what we've done with default is that it's 26, 398. And of that default number, we've identified $96,000, which although it's carried from default under the law, is no longer going to be expended. And so we funded the gasoline of 72, 4 and put $24,000 towards the police department overtime.
So your magic numbers are just not working anymore.
So essentially what default is, is the same level of services to the community.
Yep.
Uptick by contractual obligations.
Right.
In labor, debt service, solid waste.
Okay.
What it is.
With a little caveat of the gas that you just said, right?
All right, so I'm not okay with going below default. So default is the number I would like to try to get to. And with that said, I think on the table is, you know, my reductions that I would like to look at as one counselor, and that would be coming from the $200,000 from the library, and whatever else you can do to try to get us to a reasonable number, not too far over the default budget. And that, you know, and I realize that, like John says, funding the overtime is one of the things you're gonna have to do.
When you take the money from the library, you're talking about funding the things that John just talked and I just talked about, right?
Then so be it. It's gotta come from somewhere. It's, I'm not okay with just saying, you know, raise taxes. It goes against every ounce of my being, just arbitrarily as one person up here. Go ahead and raise it.
So to translate that into a motion, would that be 26, 498, 867? Is that what you're saying? $200,000 lower than what's in front of us?
26, 398, oh.
No.
There's $200,000 off, right?
Default.
From default, over.
Default.
$200,000 over. I thought you meant $200,000 down from where we are now.
Hmm, well, maybe that is down.
I just need direction. I don't need a motion. Let me suggest this, is that based upon what I heard, some councils, what their priorities may be, and which ones are not, from going over default, I'll simply reproduce this spreadsheet, which shows if we had $10 over the default, I'd spend it on X, $1,000. I'll bring that all the way up to $200,000. And then on the 28th, if you decide to fund the budget at default plus 175, then you'll have a sense of what our recommendations are to spend that official $175,000 on. So you can essentially set any level you want.
With the caveat that you're gonna reduce the library by 200 accordingly?
Well, here's the, in fact, let me rework the thing to 300.
That has to be a policy decision from the council. That's just my suggestion.
Let me rework the numbers for default plus 300, under this premise. If the council decides to reduce the library by $100,000, then essentially you know you're gonna have $100,000 out of the operating budget. So your default is 26, 398 plus 100. That's the equivalent of your old default. Do you follow?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you can, as a policy decision on the 28th, you can pick whatever level you want to pick at, but at least you'll know what staff recommends to spend any dollars over default, which are either additional tax dollars or substituting for what used to be in the library or any other departments.
So you made an example of a default plus 172. In that situation, if we said, yeah, 100 from the library, it'd be default plus 72, right?
It'd be default plus 272, actually. Because you're taking $100,000 from the default appropriation and adding it to the top. So, I mean, I think if I present it that way, you'll know what staff is thinking, where the money out of goes, based upon the input received from the council. And then you gentlemen can figure out what the ultimate level you feel comfortable presenting to deliberate session.
I lost you on that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So default is...
Right now, you've got a default budget.
It includes the library the way it is?
Yeah, and I don't want to pick on the library, but you...
We're just using that, I'm sorry.
Use an example. You've got a default budget, which includes the library default budget.
Yep.
Okay. If you make a policy decision, you're gonna fund the library at default, less $100,000 for that department, then essentially by going above the overall default budget, you're looking at up $100,000, you're spending the same amount of money. Because what you're looking at is default minus $100,000 from the library, plus $100,000 from others. You're replacing the library expense with other expenses. Okay? So if you're at this level, and you want to reduce the library, brings now to here, your authorized level is right here.
See, I looked at it, like, just to use round numbers. I looked at default, if we throw that $300,000 that we were, $200,000, say $200,000 that John was talking about, so it won't be confusing, with gasoline and overtime. So that's default. So if we took $100,000 from the library, we could spend another $100,000 on those other items that we think are undefunded.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever you reduce from the default...
The ballot's still gonna say $200,000.
Whatever you reduce from the default, in terms of current services, you can add above default and have a neutral tax rate.
For your budget, but not for where you're gonna spend it, but not for the operating budget. Still gonna say $200,000, going to the polls.
Now, if you go above 200, okay, under the current default budget, and then you make a decision to cut the library $100,000, you're not raising $100,000 over default. So the number going to the voters would be default, the original default number, plus $100,000. So let's see what that all looks like, and then we can make another decision.
I'm sure when I'm looking at it, it'll make some...
Yeah, visually, it's a lot easier to explain.
You've probably been up since 5:00. It's now 11:30, so, yeah, your brain's probably not at its optimum right now, picking it up.
Need some coffee.
You know I'm not. Okay, so Dave, are you okay?
I'm good.
You've got an idea?
I do.
All right. We have no old business, we have new business. Anybody care to take that up at 11:25? Resolution 2011-20, relative to an agreement with Granite Ridge Energy. I can read that one. Joe, you still got the gavel, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Well, I will read that. First reading is tonight, hopefully adopting it tonight, whereas, actually, these aren't my reading glasses. It is in the town's and GRE's best interest to enter into an agreement which provides a predictable tax payment for GRE and income stream to the town. Whereas it is also in both the town's and GRE's best interest to ensure that the assessment of the property, on the property, is reflective of fair market value, and whereas, for the reasons stated above, it is common practice for municipality and large taxpayers to enter into assessment agreements. Now therefore be resolved by the Lonnery Town Council that the town manager is hereby authorized to execute the tax assessment agreement between Granite Ridge Energy and the town of Lonnery for the years 2011 to 2013. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 2011-20, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's, Chair votes affirmative, that's 5-0. Resolution passes.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would make sense just to talk a little bit of detail behind that, just, like I said, a little bit, emphasizing a little bit. That is, what would, what it will be the collected taxes that this agreement will be for in the next year.
Again, very briefly, it's always in the town's best interest to understand and rely upon its major revenue sources, and it's also in the best interest of our largest property taxpayer, who, whose assessment is now over 10% of the overall town assessment. It's a significant taxpayer. So the proposal is to, what we just voted on by the council, was to enter the three-year agreement, current year we're in, we're in, next year in calendar year 2013, which represents an increase in assessment from the 2010, last year's assessment, of $10 million. Next year will increase an additional $30 million, and the year after, an additional $40 million. So, looking at 2010, the assessment on the plant was $350 million. That will increase to $430 million by 2013, which is roughly about, in 2013, should be between 12 and 14% of our total tax base.
So what that means in terms of dollars, I believe, is that for the tax year 2011, the power plant will be paying around $6.5 million with taxes.
That's correct. Just as a note, that the statewide property taxes pay directly to the state for power plants on the statewide.
Right. Thank you, Tom. Good point, pointing that out. Okay. Proposed collective bargaining agreement with ASME, LAEA, Town Administrative Personnel. Dave, do you want to just give us the...
Yeah, well, this is, this is almost, although it's a different collective bargain agreement, it's almost the same agreement as the council approved in the last meeting with LEA Public Safety Personnel. A three-year agreement with cost living adjustments of 0% for this coming year, 2% for FY13 and 2% FY14. The increased levels have been reduced similar to the other LAEA agreement. We've had the language in there, so that the town does not receive supplemental assessment for any excess payouts upon separation. And also, the group has agreed to reduce the amount of sick leave payable on separation, essentially at the highest level, it goes from 60 days to 30 days. So it mirrors, it mirrors what the rest of our units have agreed to, both this year and the previous years.
Just, Dave, I'm not in the habit of correcting you in public, but just so the minutes are right. You had, you were off by one fiscal year. It's 0% increase in FY13, 2% in '14, '15.
Thank you. That's correct.
You were off one year, so.
So this, this contract truly has a zero tax impact for FY13. The reason it's proposed, it's for approval, is that town meeting has approved the projected costs over the life of the contract. So it's estimated the cost will be $17,000 in FY14, and about $17,600 in FY15.
Nice job.
Outstanding job, yeah.
I mean, the employees recognize the current economic conditions, and were very cooperative during negotiations.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, very much. Thank you very much. All right, so do you need us to take a position tonight?
We do, so I can put it in the warrant for your consideration for the public hearing.
Make a motion that we accept the agreement as bargain.
Second. Motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that's it for new business. Approval of minutes.
Motion as prepared, in our packet, for approval.
There we go, a motion and a second. Discussion.
And that's for all three sets, by the way.
Thank you. All right, no discussion. I actually looked them over. They looked fine. All those, it is getting late. I'm getting punchy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, given the time of the evening, I suggest we dispense with the liaison and town manager reports.
No problem with that. Council's okay with it?
Fine with that.
All right. Tom, we probably want to do these, right? This is the board committee reappointments. We might as well get rid of that.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation and reappointments of the following individuals. Resignation of David Kelly from the Solid Waste and Environmental Committee, resignation of Mark Oswald from the Conservation Commission, and the reappointment of Paul Nickerson to the Conservation Commission, three-year term, to expire 12/31/14.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Discussion. Who's the second?
January 12th or Thursday?
I can second it.
I won't be here.
Okay, all those...
Unless I can catch an early flight.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to the resignation of David Kelly, resignation of Mark Oswald, and the reappointment of Paul Nickerson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's on the table.
Go ahead, Reid. You didn't make a motion to adjourn yet, did you?
No, we did. We're waiting for you.
No one's seconded yet.
Okay, I talked to the school board at their last meeting and tell them that I would not be able to be talking to them again about trying to get people to two deliberative sessions in one week. Now, I'm, every time I get up and talk to people to try and get to a deliberative session, but the next one's always, the town meeting's always in the next month, so I don't have to, they have a little breathing room. This time they have, go to two deliberative sessions in one week, which they've never had to do. And what we'd like to see is more people at each deliberative session. Now, have you got a thought as to how to do that?
You got me on that one. 11:30 at night, kid. I'll have to, I'll have to give it some thought.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and be back on the 28th. I'll be leaving the next day for a month, so I do want to try and, I'll be back in time for the deliberative sessions. But I do want you all and the school board to talk about, talk it up to people, because that's important.
Agreed.
It's their town.
Agreed.
It's their town. And it's the only time that their voice really has any impact. I mean, I get 16 calls, you get some calls, and you get, what do you call it, emails and stuff, but they've got to be there in person.
I'll second the motion on the floor.
Hey, motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative for an adjournment. their lives overseas and at home. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. I don't have my agenda just yet. Dave, what's first on the agenda before I pull this thing up?
Dottie Grover, Director of Cable Services, about the school project?
Actually, we're in public comment.
Yes.
It's public comment.
Yeah, it'd be something I'd like to just run by the council and see if the chairman would entertain a consensus. With the pending Woodmount project, I was wondering if the council would entertain the possibility of having the town, asking the town manager to have the town attorney engage in all further meetings. Reasoning behind that is, is the discussions that are taking place with the staff, as well as the planning board meetings that are taking place, want to make sure that the planning board gets all of the resources necessary to be able to represent the residents and citizens of the town, so that for the first time, working through the PUD ordinance, we understand it completely, we work through the rules together, and that we engage our town attorney to help best represent our citizens, planning board, and staff. And I'd ask if the chairman would entertain a consensus from the council to direct the town manager to do so.
John, I think that would be a great idea. I was there at the meeting the other night. I got up and spoke to that. I think it would be a very good asset to have at the meetings, to protect, to protect us, and also to give the folks that are sitting up here and volunteering their time professional opinions if they need it. And there's a lot riding on it, there's, you know, it's a very big development, and I think that would probably be a really good idea. So I can think we could go through and take a straw poll. Tom, what do you think?
I agree.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I too was at the meeting, and I wish that Bart was there many, many times. So I agree, his presence would be very, very helpful to the planning board.
Mr. Crider?
As somebody that was there, I'd be, I think would be well-served by having our attorney there.
Okay. They have it. So we can direct Dave, when he gets back, to make sure that we do have representation there from the town attorney, or one of the staff members from the firm. So, you got it, John. 5-0. So, starting the next time we have the development at the planning board, that will be one of the things we do. So if you could pass that on to, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
That's what I'm doing.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Okay, Dottie, it's all yours.
Okay. I wanted to come tonight, because, Dottie Grover, Director of Cable Services, I wanted to come tonight because I checked with the town manager to find out whether or not a check, a check had been cut for the school district yet, in the amount of $7,500. And when he told me that he had not done that quite yet, I thought it would be a good idea to come in and give you a little bit of information. I'm looking at order 2005-13, which is one of the ones where we started giving the $7,500 to the school district as an annual grant that they were to be using for cable-related activities. They could do things like buy cameras for the elementary school kids. Some of those kids do a really great news program, you should watch it. The weather is always good. But anyway, this year, again, there had been the discussion of doing the $7,500, and I'm going to recommend that you give them more than that. The reason being is that in the last settlements, the relationship between the school district and the studio has just really been so positive and so fantastic. And we have a lot more information going back and forth and sharing of what's going on. One of my concerns in the past is that we were just handing over $7,500 and never really had an accounting of where that was going, if it was really going to cable-related types of things, or Leo 21 things or not. This year, I was given some information about $8,000 worth of equipment that the school district had no problem justifying to me that they really could use and use well for the schools to put programming on Leo 21. And in addition to that, I had a conversation with Andy Corey, the Assistant Superintendent, about an opportunity that he had to obtain some distance learning equipment that is brand-new, probably would have sold for about $7,500 or more, and they are able to get it right now for about $5,500, because the district that wanted to use it was unable to fund it. In talking to him about this, we talked about many different ways that this could be cable-related, that the community could also benefit from it, by putting programming over our INET, so that, for example, if there's something going on that maybe the high school kids are interested in, it might also be a historical type of discussion that would be of interest to senior citizens. We could use it for them to see and interact, so it would be really terrific. So I'm certainly willing to ask any questions, but the total amount that I would ask you to authorize a check to the school district for Leo 21 and cable-related activities would be $13,500 to come out of the special revenue fund, the, not the budget, but out of that fund, where it's usually coming from. And I'm willing to answer any questions you might have about that.
Council, have any questions for Tom?
Yeah. So you're suggesting it comes out of the cable funds, undesignated fund balance?
Yes. That's where the $7,500 was coming from.
Yeah, well, it comes out of the budget, but the budget just flows to the bottom line, and any adds and deletes come out of the undesignated fund balance. That's correct.
Okay.
So if that's the council's concurrence, then we'll return with an order at the next meeting to formalize that.
What was the amount you...
It was $13,500.
Would this, would this be applied to expenditures for the 12 or 13 budget?
It would be paid this year, because we haven't given them...
Would be to augment the 2012?
The one that went, 2012, yes. We haven't done that for them yet this year.
Okay, so then that would come back to us as a resolution?
That's correct. Next meeting. That's correct.
John?
Yeah, I'm primed with it.
All right, Dottie. We have a consensus.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
But it's a go?
It's a go.
Terrific. I will tell them they'll be thrilled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're still in public comment. Is there any, anything else, non-budget related?
Well, actually, I had two. One on the cable. I think last year, the school paid, what was the budget item? The school paid $100,000 for cable services? Is that...
Well, the gist of it is, I think, since we're collecting a fee in town for the cable studio, for the benefit of the town, I'd like to see the cable studio pay the whole thing for the school system. I don't know why we're charging the school system, you know, for all these supplies and extra things. I think that should be just part of the cable service for the whole town. You know, keep it simple. And the other question I have is for the planning board. I was at that meeting last Wednesday, and I too had kind of puzzled as to why the planning department did not review the Woodmount proposal within the 30 days that the ordinance requires. I kind of find it surprising. I understand they want to have a third-party review to kind of double-check their stuff, but I didn't think the lawyer on their side was that unreasonable about asking us to follow the ordinance. So I'm just curious to why the town, from what was said, I believe, that they did not review the ord, they did not review the proposal at all.
John has an answer for you.
All right, so Martin, what's been explained to us is, and Dave will rile me in if I go in the wrong direction here, is that the applicant asked, we have a standard engineer, StanTech, that reviews all of our plans. The applicant asked to deviate from that plan, went to the planning board, requested that we deviate from using StanTech, and that we go out to a, by RFP, we get another engineering firm or put it out for bid. Because of that process, the applicant knew all this, they actually requested it, we needed that time, with their understanding, that we needed to be able to put an RFP together, because that's the way we do business. StanTech will probably be one of the people who will been on that RFP. I don't know if they will or they won't until those things are open, but I would guess they probably would. And that, once those are opened on January 4th, the planning board, the planning staff and the planning board will then make a selection of who that person is, and then all the clocks will start. That's my, that's my understanding of why things were done that way, and we deviated from what you're stating.
Well, we have StanTech on waivers, so to speak, that they review all the plans. Why wouldn't they do that anyway? Why don't they, why did the applicant not trust or believe in StanTech, since they do everything else? And didn't the town also, planning department, write the ordinance, the PUD? We went through the planning board, we went through the town council, and the planning department was right there through this whole process of writing the PUD. So I find it kind of odd that they wouldn't understand what was in there.
Well, a couple of things on that. And thank you for bringing it all up. What it is, is that the applicant came to the planning board and asked the planning board to use a different reviewer. The planning board said, okay, we'll go ahead and we'll allow that. It's nothing that was written into the PUD. As you know, since you follow things, Tim Thompson is actually the architect of the PUD and everything. So, and Tim is still having conversations with Andre, and we're making sure that the staff is very clear on what the PUD is doing. You'll also understand, you heard my statement at the beginning, that we've engaged the town attorney as well, to make sure we're following everything the way that we're supposed to be following it. So I think probably, the way we look at it is that this is a learned process. Some people are asking for first things that we haven't seen before. So what we do know is, is that we can't just rely on, we have a talented staff, we can't just rely on them right now. This is maybe the largest project in New Hampshire, probably ever. So we want to make sure we do it right. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question...
Well, I understand that. My problem is, again, looking forward, we have 1,000 acres up at the airport. Every time we have a PUD of over 100 acres, the potential from where this process is going, would every developer request that, to have an outside company review the plans? I mean, that's going to run into a lot of extra money.
It doesn't run us into any extra money, to be honest, because they pay for the review.
Okay.
Now, the thing is, is they may come and they may make that request, and a different planning board, or the same sitting planning board, they'll say, you know, no, we use StanTech, this is what you got to do. I don't know what they're going to do.
Okay.
But that's definitely an option to them. But in this particular case, they said, okay, we'll entertain that. I don't know where they'll wind up at the end of the RFP.
Didn't come out like that Wednesday, but...
Well, I heard, you know, I was in San Diego getting telephone calls from somebody, so trying to explain some of this. But that's my understanding, Gabe. Did I miss anything?[1760.53]
No, the application came in the middle of October. After discussing with staff, they requested a hearing on December 14th. If the town had followed its normal course of review, staff would have a recommendation on the 14th. The applicant requested, and the planning board concurred, to seek independent proposals for that review. So necessarily, that extends the process to accommodate the applicant.
Right. No, I understand that part. My question is, I thought they had the knowledge there.
I understand. The council's taking it very seriously based on the statement and the consensus we drew earlier, is that we see this as something that we need to make sure that all boards have what they need. But especially in this case, we support this board in any way possible to protect, you know, the citizens' rights in the town and their understanding of, you know, all the processes. Because for people like us who don't, for people who don't follow it, we owe them that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Andre Garin, Community Development Director. The only one part I just want to add to everything you said was actually correct, was that actually staff did start the review of this application, but at the November 2nd, the board, planning board opted to move forward with a third-party consultant from, to review the application from its inception to its conclusion. Therefore, given that the, this third-party review will take, basically take control of the application from beginning to end, therefore, now we would work with the consultant with regards to the review, as opposed to have two different reviews for this particular project. Hopefully, that answers Marty's question.
Okay. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you. Very well done as far as describing the situation. Okay. Any other public comment? Non-budget related?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to just throw this out there. We had some recent news media, and I was incorrectly quoted about Dave being wrong, and I wanted to make sure that I clarified the fact that I never said that Dave was wrong. So just throw it out there. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I guess that's it for public comment.
I just was wondering, Mary Sores, do you guys have a list of what order you're going to take the budget in?
The budget's next public hearing is opening up.
No, I know, but I mean, do you have it by department, by department for our application?
Mary, there's a notice right here.
Oh, is it that listed?
It does.
Okay. That's it. Okay. Now, we're now out of public comment, and I'm going to open up the public hearing. So can I get a motion to go into public hearing, please?
So moved.
Motion on the second by Councilor, Councilor Dolen. And we are now in public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0. We are now in public hearing. Okay, so Dave, back to the budget.
Yeah, this is the council's first public hearing on the proposed FY13 town budget. At your last budget workshop of December 1st, 2011, the council voted to, at this point in the process, present a default budget plus $300,000. That $300,000 allocated to various departments upon my recommendation, which the council, of course, can adjust, since that this public hearing is the town council's budget, which ultimately is presented to the voters at the town meeting. I would suggest that you seek public input on the, on the separate articles individually, as set forth in the notice. And we have additional copies up here in the corner, should anybody need a copy. And I would also suggest that you not take public comment on Article 2, which is the highway reconstruction bond, since the council has scheduled a separate public hearing on that issue, and that is scheduled for Wednesday, December 28th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. All right, Dave. Thank you. All right, then, seeing that, we're going to move to Article 3, which is the Expendable Maintenance Trust. Councilor Dolen?
May I make a general comment?
Sure.
As we begin this process, this is, this is our first meeting where we get to be listeners, where we hear from the, from you all in the public. Personally, I'd like to hear your suggestions, what to add, what to subtract, what's important to you in terms of services, and what your priorities are, because that will help us, as we circle back around after hearing you, make adjustments to the budget. And that will be what gets presented to the deliberative session. So I'm ready to listen, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, so we're at Article 3, Expendable Maintenance Trust. Anybody in the council? Just going to go to the public? Is that what we're planning on doing?
Sure. Why don't we, I'd love to hear that after a sec.
All right. So Article 2, we're talking Expendable Maintenance Trust. Mary?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to speak about this article, although maybe others behind me will. But I'm wondering if after this article is done, you might skip to Article 7, only because there are children in the audience that want to speak to that, and it would behoove us to let them get home before that, you know.
Okay. I've got no problem with that, counsel.
So if you would consider that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
It's okay with me. We can go there now for all of it.
Yep. Mary, if you want to do that, we could do that right now. That's fine.
Well, it's up to you. You open up.
Nope, that's okay. That's fine. It's not a problem. So we can do that.
We'll go back to 3 in a minute.
So we're going to go down to Article 7, the Special Revenue Funds. In that, that is sewer, cable, and the police outside detail. So if you have questions or concerns in regards to anything within what I just said on Article 7, step right up to the mic. Please give your name and your address.
Richard Bolinski, 89 Hall Road, Cable Studio. While I understand what you're trying to do by taking from the undesignated fund balance of the cable studio, I do have a problem with the way it's proposed, it being done. Every year, we have a warrant article at town meeting where we vote in the special revenue funds for sewer, police, and cable. And in that, it follows state law that says that any of the unused funds cannot be used for any other purpose unless the legislative body of the town, which is the town council, votes in a certain appropriation dollar figure. And that that dollar figure, if approved, has to be used for something to do with police, sewer, or cable, depending on which special revenue fund you're taking it out of. 31:95C, and I forgot my reading glasses. Towns may pursuant to RSA 31:95-D, vote to restrict revenues or any portion of revenues from a specific source to expenditures for specific purposes. Such revenues and expenditures shall be accounted for in a special revenue fund, separate from the general fund. Goes into highway, you know, special funds for highway, special funds for capital improvement. Section 3 of that says, any surplus in any fund created under paragraph 1 or 2 shall not be deemed part of the general fund accumulated surplus, nor shall any surplus be expended for any purpose or transferred to any appropriation till such time as the legislative body shall have voted to appropriate a specific amount from said fund for a specific purpose related to the purpose or source of the revenue. If you go to the town book and you look at Article 8 from 2000, the warrant for 2011, Article 8 says the same thing. It also says, gives you the amounts that you're voting into the special revenue funds. In the case of the cable franchise fee, it's $366,657. And if you wanted to ask Dottie, I don't know, if you could ask Dottie if that is the full 5% that is collected, which I believe it is.
Is that, no?
The, the amount, this is the way the process works, is that, Richard is right. Once the surplus, once the revenues reach the sewer, I mean, the cable division surplus, then you can only use those funds for cable-related purposes. The process which the town uses is that when the funds come through the door from Comcast, a certain percentage goes to the cable division to pay for cable-related expenses, and a percentage never goes into the cable fund, goes to the general fund to assist with the payment of taxes. So the $105,000, which is the 1.5% of the 5% franchise, which Comcast pays, goes directly to the general fund. The 3.5% goes into the special revenue fund to pay for that year's operating budget.
Okay, and that's where the problem lies. If you look at this law, it doesn't say you can split it up. It's supposed to go, those revenues funds collected from whatever source, sewer, cable, police, supposed to be directed right to the special revenue fund.
What's the citation again?
3195C.
C.
All right. Also, you've had a warrant, I have this year, of course, you have one from this year in April, March, and the one from the year in each book. It goes back about 10 years. And every year, you've had a, an article stating that's what going to be, that's going to be done, it's going to go into the special revenue fund. You've given the dollar amount that people are voting on, the people that voted at town meeting to do it that way. And quite frankly, their vote isn't being taken seriously, because if you go to vote to take 105, whatever the numbers are you want to take out for another purpose, you've just done exactly what the people voted not to do. It's not what you're trying to do. It's the way it's being done. To put it into the general fund, to take out of the kitty what you want, and then put it in the special revenue fund, is not what should be done. The state law and your warrant article, you can see that the warrant article was written from the state law. It's almost the same exact wording. So, while I know it's a source of funding and what you want, I understand what you're trying to do. And I've said this before years ago, yes, you're the legislative body by our town charter. You have all the powers of the town, of the legislative body. But, does that mean you're going to ignore the vote? The people voted in? If you want to do this, let's do it right. You can go to 39, what's it, 39:3, and you can do an article with 25 signatures and say, this is what you want to do, and let the people vote. If they vote to do it, fine. I think the way you're doing it, in my words, is a backdoor way of doing it. We'll drop it in the fund it shouldn't have hit to begin with, take our 1.5%, and then we'll put the rest of the 3.5% into the cable fund. I think it's wrong. It's been done for years. The other problem with that is, for those of you that have been here long enough, which is most of you, if you go back to when the cable studio was built, because that was being done back then, and I forget the percentages, we didn't have any money in the fund to build a cable studio, and it had to go to a bond. And the bond was 300,000, and it went up to 365, and they took another 35,000, if you want, figures are right here, from 2000. What if, what if the roof goes bad? We just had a roof go bad in the library. Now, the expenditure for that roof should come out of the cable special revenue surplus fund. But if you're going to keep robbing it and there's nothing left, what are you going to pay for that for? Are you going to use that, take it out of the capital improvement maintenance fund? It shouldn't have to come out of that. It should come out of this. I don't think it's good planning. I know you're looking for revenue, and I understand that. But the way I'm reading the law, and I've had a few people read it and tell me what they thought, see if they interpret it the way I am, it doesn't say you can do that. Plus, the people voted on it.
When did they do that? When did they vote to restrict the funds to go only into the special revenue fund?
To vote, you have an.
That's an annual, that's an annual vote. So now you got this.
Right. And they voted in 2010, and the amount you put for them to vote to go into the special revenue fund was the full anticipated 5% of the cable fees, not the cable fees less your 100, and whatever, you know, whatever you wanted to take.
But aren't they voting on that this coming March? They'll vote to put in 295,000?
265.
Or 265.
You know, to fix the future, you got to look at what was done in the past.
No, I understand, but that's, but that's an annual, it's an annual vote. And what I'm asking is, did the townspeople vote at some point and say, you will put all cable funds in the special revenue fund?
Whether they did or didn't, to me, is irrelevant if you're putting the number that they're voting on as the full cable. It was done as a resolution.
Nobody, nobody ever says it's the full cable.
Is that the full cable number? It doesn't matter whether they say it. The number comes out to the full fee.
Right.
We can go round and round and try to twist this whatever way we want, but the fact is, is the number that was given to the people to vote to put into the cable fund, and it's the full 5% of the fees, and to pull it out.
Where were you seeing that, that it's the full 5%?
Dave, is it the, hold on, it's clarification purposes. Is it the full 5?
265.
We, we collect about $90,000 to $95,000 a quarter. So that's about between $360,000, $380,000 a year. We also receive a grant from Comcast as part of the contract, which was negotiated for about $20,000 to $30,000 for equipment.
Let me ask a clarifying question. Is the 265,000 the 3.5% or the 5%?
It's 3.5%.
And let me ask another question. Is that 265 intended for use of, anything other than the cable?
No, 265 is for the cable division, to operate the cable.
So when the people vote on the 265, they can be assured that that 265 they vote on will be used for cable operations?
It's for the cable budget. That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
Restrictive the revenues for established special revenue funds, say, all the revenues need to go into the fund. It's there. If you guys want to go around it, and it's been circumvented for years in this town, be my guest, we'll do a resolution to put them all in there. I think it's poor planning. I'll start the article tonight if I have to, to get the 25 signatures to put the full thing in there. I don't care if you do it. I think it needs to be made clear to the people, this is what you're doing. And not play the game, well, how do they know the full number, that number is the full 5% or the 3.5, or whatever percentage you want. They voted on a number, you know, last year, they'll vote on another number today. They've known that this was a resolution in place up until last year for the full 5% that went into place in 99 or 2000, for the reason that we didn't have funds to build the cable studio. And here we go again. Make it clear, do it right, have the people vote if they want to do it. Yes, I understand you're the legislative body, but if you've already had people vote, you know, everybody says, why can't we get people to vote? It's kind of one of the reasons. You can't get people to vote. They vote on something, and then you do something else anyway. So why bother voting?
Let me ask it again. So, to be clear, we're going to ask people to vote to see if they want to put $265,000 into cable special revenue fund.
See if they want to change the 5%.
No, we're going to ask them if they want to put the 265 in a special revenue fund for cable operations. And I think the intention and the restriction, we're going to fence off that money, is that all, 100% of that $265,000 that they're going to vote on will be used for cable operations. I think it's pretty clear. I don't know how more clear we could make it.
Okay, so you have the $450,000 that's been taken, not going by this in the last five, six years, I'd like to see it put back in the cable fund. Didn't have the right to take it. If, you know, we want to start doing that, I want my 450 back. Put it back in the cable fund, roughly 450.
Well, to be honest, Richard, there's people on, you know, there's people that have talked about over the last month of, take it all. You know, I mean, I'm not saying it's the right.
And that's fine. They have the right to do that.
Right.
But when, when there's been votes, or there's been consensus, we've asked the question meetings, the majority of the people have said they wanted it there. That's why it kept getting changed to the 5%.
Right. All I'm saying is, is that, is it could be 265, or if this legislative body says that they want it to be zero, it could be zero. You know, I understand what you're saying, but what I want also to understand, and I think you understand this, is that that can be changed. It can be changed so that it's 5% too.
Well, it can be changed. We can do a warrant article and word it and such, that it can never be changed. But why do that?
If it passes.
If it passes, well, anything, if it passes. So roof blows off that we don't have the revenues left in the special education, special revenue fund for the cable studio. Where's the money going to come from? Now it's going to have to come out of.
Dave, is that budgeted, is that budgeted and covered under the Expendable Maintenance Trust?
If there's an emergency in a building, we use our Expendable Maintenance Trust fund.
I spoke to Dottie and asked her about this specifically, and all the maintenance and what's been done over there has always come out of that fund.
Well, but if, but if we decide to take it out of the Expendable Maintenance Trust fund to replace the roof, we have the ability to do that.
So I'm not going to get my 450, I'm not going to get my 450 back? There's already been taken, it hasn't been taken, according to the way you're trying to do it this year?
Well, according to what we've been told, okay, and we only know what we've been told is, is that we've been given, you know, we've had this reviewed, you brought it up last year. We haven't changed anything from last year. We're doing exactly the same way.
So I guess.
And we're told, and we're told that the way we're proceeding is correct. Now, I mean, if we, if we need to direct the town manager to ask the town attorney for another legal opinion on it, you know, the chairman can ask us if we'll have a consensus to do that.
Do we have a written legal opinion on this? Because state law is quite clear.
I don't know. I mean, I'd be more than happy to ask the chairman, to ask for consensus to have the town attorney take a look at it.
Dave, can you get that for us from Bart?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm trying to get you an answer.
Right. I know what you're trying to do, but just like the way that it's being done stinks.
And then depending on that, to Richard's, to Richard's point, and to Richard's point, if there's a problem with it, then we'll, we'll rediscuss it, and if we have to, you know, put it before the voters, that's all we'll do.
Or if we have to correct it, we'll correct it.
I mean, if people vote to put all 5% into the general fund, fine, but that's not what people are under the understanding of. It's been, you know, other than the change you made last year, the majority of the people still think it's the whole thing going in because they said we, it was voted on years ago. What's going on? It needs to be clear. I understand what you're doing, and I have been to meetings before when they've taken the money out and said you shouldn't, and guess what? It got taken out anyway. You had no right to take it. And it's about $450,000 over the last 10 years that shouldn't have been touched.
But, but Richard, I gotta say, I disagree with you when you say we don't have a right to take it. Even you just said, we could put it all in the general fund.
I said, if the people vote to do so.
Well, no, the people, the legislative body can do it right now if they decide to.
I know they can. But you, when you have a warrant article where people have voted, you could do it for this year. You couldn't do it in the past years because you didn't because you didn't have the five percent split up, three and a half to one and a half, whatever percentage, and it still got done. All right, it still got moved, and it should have never got moved in any of those years for anything that was unrelated to the cable studio. It's the same with the police outside detail, it's the same with the SOR. And I don't know if any of that's got moved, I haven't looked at that.
Yeah, you've asked an interesting question, we're gonna try to get you an answer.
So, is your disagreement with some prior council, or what's before this council this year?
It does, it's the whole way it's being done, you need to make it clear, people still think that's the whole, the whole five percent. All right?
Okay, we're gonna find out.
And I just, we'll just get an article out there, do the whole five, but I think it's better that you're upfront with people and say, this is what we want to do, this is why, and make sure they understand this. Put it in the article, that the full amount is three sixty-one, two sixty-five, whatever the numbers are. Two sixty-five is gonna go to the special revenue fund, the rest is gonna go into the general fund, so they know this.
Well, let's be clear, though, that you're, what you're suggesting is that we're doing something underhanded. And it's been very vocal, very much in the public, in the minutes, in the newspaper, that we're, we are moving three and a half percent of revenue, of those revenues into a special revenue account. It's not, not anything that's happened in the dead of night, or after midnight, or without a meeting. These are all public meetings, with public minutes published on our website, in the newspaper. There've been articles written about it, and we've had extensive discussions about it. So, your suggestion that this is happening in some underhanded way, or with the public not knowing what we're doing, it doesn't hold water.
Well, the revenue funds are supposed to, if you have an established special revenue fund, that's where they're supposed to be. That's where they're supposed to be.
I understand you disagree with the policy, but, but it's, but you've gone too far when you suggest that this is something that is being done in an underhanded way. Or out of the public's eye.
That's my opinion, and I'm entitled to it.
Richard, I, I think the thing where, I think town council disagrees with you is, is when it gets in the special revenue account, I think everybody agrees it can only be used for cable funds. But prior to that, it can be used for any purpose.
Should be deposited straight into the special revenue fund. Shouldn't go to one and then the other.
But actually, Richard, I think the law's clear on that. It can go into the general fund, and it doesn't have to go into all in the cable fund, or we don't pull it out. I mean.
I believe that is the legal opinion.
Once it's in, you can't take it out.
That's the opinion.
That is the legal opinion.
So, when you sit there and say, you know, that it's gotta go in there first, that's just not a correct statement. You shouldn't leave that out.
Well, they shouldn't have taken four hundred and fifty thousand out over the last nine years either, and they did.
But that's why I asked you, Richard, if we, if we voted in the past, if you find something that says that it's all supposed to go in there, that's a, that's a different story.
Look at the Warren article, it says it every year.
No, that's not.
It's in the town book, it isn't me, it's in the town book, I'll leave it at that. I'll just start an article and get it all. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Richard.
Ms. Qualley Vitale, seventy-five Merrimeth Road. In two thousand, the council passed a resolution saying that complete five percent will go into the general fund. After that, forty thousand dollars a year was taken out of that fund, which was against the resolution that was passed by the town council. Up until last year, to cover back all the forty thousand dollars being taken out, you passed another resolution changing it to one point five and three point five. But what, I said, but what happens? What, you know, I don't, doesn't anybody check prior resolutions to make sure that no one is going against the resolution? You're going, as you said, the money doesn't get into the special fund. But what's in there now in the special fund, you cannot take out because it won't be used for cable. That's already in the fund, which is exactly what you said.
Yeah, I think that's what we agree.
No, you says if it goes in, if one point five goes here, three point five.
We, we agree with you.
But you guys, yeah, last year, a hundred and five thousand, because you passed the resolution for that. But what about the prior year, and the prior year, and the prior year?
Well, I wasn't here for that.
I know, but I'm saying.
But I agree with you then.
One council does something, there should be a limitation, a statute of limitation, if a council passes something, you just can't go back to next year, because now you've got a new council, and there's new thinking. No, excuse me.
You, you know.
John, John, one minute, one minute. What good is to have a council passing its own resolutions when a next council can come in, can completely override that resolution?
Unfortunately, that's our government, unfortunately, that's the way we're laid out. And I, and I understand what you're saying, I really do. But, you know, we, we have different congresses, we have different presidents, governors, legislative bodies, and they do different things. I don't necessarily agree with the whole bunch of stuff they do, but they, but they're allowed to.
Now, we have a gentleman back here who wants to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the, out of the fund for the school. The school's program is completely different. The eight thousand dollars that Dottie gives us for equipment, we don't support the school stuff, we don't support their classes, their shows. One thing that, what the school does, is that when kids wind up taping the shows, they're getting paid by the school. None of the volunteers on the public side don't get paid, except for the gentleman down here doing the government. They wind up getting paid. So, now we're gonna take another hundred thousand dollars out. And the next question comes in, is, which we brought up last year. What happens when the FCC decides no more franchise fees? Which they're going to do. Now you have no income. Right now, the studio is one hundred percent paid by franchise fees. Dottie Salve and benefits, Drew Salve and benefits, Erin Salve and benefits, the electrician, the electricity, the telephone, everything in that building across the street is paid by eighty-five percent of the town population. There's a zero impact on the taxes for the town. And last year, you were gonna go to get rid of a position. Her Salve wasn't paid, Dave wanted a hundred and five thousand dollars, and that was the easiest way to say, we're gonna eliminate a position. Her Salve is paid, was already paid by the franchise fees. And if you eliminate any more positions, all you're gonna get is more money in a reserve fund. But as the state RSA says, once it's in that fund, you only can use it for cable. But as it says, you know, one council does one thing, next, it happened to be ten years different, but you have ten years. One council decides to make a change. I think the way of resolving this one hundred percent is by doing a Warren article. Thank you.
Please, Pat.
Hello, my name is Logan Wright, seven Gary Drive. I'm here with the Londery Access Center. I just want to say that the Londery Access Center means everything to me. I have a ton of fun there. It just feels so good to be a part of something. You can go make your own production, and put it on TV, and be able to say, I did that. Anybody can come make what they want, and without Erin, that's close to impossible. She's always very kind and helpful to me and many others. I can name many times where she has been above and beyond. She does so much, having summer camp and after-school club, even just helping me on school projects. She's always been there for me. There was just one time, this last minute, English project, and we got done all in one afternoon. She's very kind, hardworking, caring. One day, I seemed upset in the club, and she called me later that day to make sure everything was okay. I remember first coming here two summers ago for the video summer camp, and wondering if I would like it or not. Now, I love it so much, I would like to major in video production. Without Erin, the after-school club would be gone, as well as the summer camps. Also, the training, by the way, is, which is free, and anyone can come in and use, would be a lot more limited. Vakut Pro, green screen, sound lighting, camcorder, and directing are just a few things you can be trained in. Erin is also always looking for new ideas, to be Photoshop, you know, stuff like that. She helps out on different activities, like stand-alive for little kids. My cousins just went there the other day, and they loved it. Okay, Alana, do you want to take over?
Okay. Besides, not one penny of the.
Can we have your name?
Me? Oh, sorry, Alana. Okay. Not one penny of the Londery Access Center is used by tax dollars. So, why should you be taking it? If you take away Erin, you take a lot from the community.
So, Alana, where do you live?
Oh, ten Acorne Drive.
Okay, and your last name?
Janelle.
Okay. You guys did an excellent job, though, right? Erin is a valued resource in this community. I don't think I've ever heard anybody say anything about her in any negative way at all. My wife has interacted with her, I know I think a lot of her, and I think she does a great job with you guys. So, it was very mature and brave of you to come up here in front of all these adults and everything, and speak those words. So, I, for one person, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And from the council.
Is this the first time that you two have testified before a public body like this?
Yeah, it is.
A little scary?
A little bit.
You did, you did very well.
You did a great job, you're a great testament to the local school system and to your parents, so congratulations for having the courage to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Martin, one eighty-two Pillsbury Road, London Dairy, New Hampshire. Just to the kids, don't feel bad, they scared me, too. But I fight with them.
We'll try not to do that tonight.
Yeah, I know, it's not, all right. You know, my thought on the public, public access is, I've used it, I don't know if any of you folks use it, if you don't use it, if you don't, you should get involved. If you want to take money from public access, it's the wrong thing to do. For one, if I'm a cable, I pay cable, my five percent should be going directly to public access. In no way should that money go anywhere but there. That money is, like the gentleman said before, has nothing to do with taxes, zero. It's, it's a no-brainer. Why are we touching money and shifting it somewhere else? Leave it alone. You know, the state is, let's go to the state, the state is notorious for taking money from other funds. I'm an avid fisherman, you'll probably catch me on any lake on any good afternoon, or even in a rainy day. And they'll take, they're taking money from the fees of paying for my license, and now they're sticking it into general funds. Look how well that's worked, though, you know? And now the state, the state's having a problem, the fishing game is having a problem, just using an example. Leave it alone, the money belongs there. It's the cables' people. That's their public access, it's not the town, it's not even the taxpayers. The taxpayers are welcome to use it, obviously, but it's for people who are paying cable funds, five percent. That's gotta, this has gotta stop. Seems like every year we go through this. Now, if this is for a reason to try to get rid of somebody, or get rid of somebody's job, who doesn't even make as much as the, most of the head of departments around here, stop it. This has got to stop. There's no need for this. It sounds like this is a personal vindictive after the management of public access. That's what I'm getting the feeling of. This has to stop. This five percent does not belong to the town's general fund or anywhere, it belongs to public access. Let's leave it there, thank you.
Mary Mansour, Sugarell Road. I agree that the five percent should stay with the Access Center. I've worked for the past nine years in the Access Center and as a volunteer. And if it wasn't for the, the people that are working there now, and three jobs that are, that are paid full-time jobs there now, I wouldn't have been able to be supported, nor would any of the shows that I've produced, or directed, or managed, be able to have been supported. I would not have learned how to use the equipment that I've learned how to use. And I know that there are times when I need brush-ups, and I know that there are times when, you know, I'm just at a loss. And if I didn't have that resource there, it would, it would take longer for me to be able to complete what I wanted to complete. I know, I asked for a list of the duties of each of the people that work in that, in the Access Center. And in looking them over, I don't see how there's duplicates of, duplications of effort. I don't see how if you eliminate one position, somebody else is gonna be able to pick up that, that, that work that's involved there. And I believe that the budget can be managed very well by them, given the cable access fees that are designated for that purpose. And that no one should be telling them, you know, how to use that unless it's, unless it's obvious that there's something going wrong. When I look at the programming, when I look at the support that I get as a, as a townsperson and as a user of the cable services, I don't see that happening at all. And so, I would appreciate it if you would reconsider the way that you are handling this. I have, I watched you cut and cut and cut and cut. And I spent forty minutes waiting in line the other day in the town taxpayers' office to get sworn in, because there was only one person there, other people were out, and that person had to do everybody's job. And I waited in line, you know, just as anybody would do. But the point is, there's a point where you have to stop, or you're not giving us the value for our tax dollars. And, and I think we've reached that point. And as far as the cable is concerned, it shouldn't even be, you know, a topic of conversation, because there are funds designated directly for that, and they should be used directly for that. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question. Just, Mary, are you suggesting that once the director retires in, say, September, that you would like us to keep three positions there?
I would.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I, I definitely believe that there is work there for three people, that, that those three people, those three positions support different parts of the, of the needs of that cable system, that cable access center. And I know that should you eliminate a position with that retirement, if should you not replace that person, whatever, however you shift things around, if there were not three people there to handle the workload, it will be a detriment to the people who use the Cable Access Center on a regular basis. And again, you know, I buy cable from the town, I look forward for that service, I look to be able to, you know, produce shows when I want to, I look to be able to go get cameras when I need them, and I, I need somebody there to service that. And if I don't, if there are not three people there, that may not be the case. And I'd be mad.
Thank you, it's one clarification, thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Sullivan, I'm from Derry, nine St. Charles Street, the cusp of London Derry. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service.
Can I, can I ask you to stop for a second? Is there any London Derry residents? You're from Derry, right?
I am from London Derry.
Oh, you said London Derry? I thought you said dairy.
I did say, I did say dairy, I said nine St. Charles Street, which is the cutoff for half dairy, half London Derry.
That's fine, my bad.
I should have said London Derry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's just that honesty in me, I'm sorry.
Protocol, I just want to follow it and make sure that London Derry, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Like I said at first, I'd like to thank you all for your service. And I'm, I'm here to represent the youth program at LACTV Media Group. I have two sons in that program. And there's a couple of other guys that are not here tonight, because they're working on their Eagle Scout, you know, their scout projects, and their scout badges and things like that, so they couldn't be here tonight. I wanted to talk about how valuable the program is, and how important it is that those three people that are running the show right now have become to not only my family, but to the community, and to the many, the many, the youth group over at LACTV. You know, people are always talking about programs for their youth. We hear these stories about, you know, the sports in London Derry, it's terrific. We hear about the music program in London Derry. We hear about the music program in London Derry. Well, guess what? We have a gem of a youth program. It's a, it's a LAT, uh, LACTV Youth Media Program and it's second to none. So anybody who's ever really gone over there and participated or seen it, um, it's an amazing thing. Most of those kids over there are not your run-of-the-mill kind of kids, just like the, the, the students that you just heard from. They are all, they're members of the band, of the orchestra. Uh, many of them are working on Eagle Scout scouts and, uh, some of them have unbelievable, um, skills outside of that. Um, these guy, these kids have a lot of character and a lot of their confidence and their leadership skills are as a direct result of being, um, involved in Erin's project over at LACTV, including my own sons who started in, uh, almost, I think it's almost four years ago now. So my sons are ninth and tenth graders at, um, London Derry High School. And they started, um, when Erin was in her first year of LACTV. Because of Erin's programs, um, my sons were able to get jobs, um, at Market Basket because they proved that they had some job skills and, um, leadership qualities. And I contribute that directly to Erin's great, um, direction. My sons have, uh, been involved in so many of the community services, volunteering. I mean, how many kids do you know that on a Saturday, on a Saturday afternoon want to volunteer for something that Erin has got them involved in? Or doing public service announcements for, um, drug, um, you know, drug-free, our drug-free community? Uh, promoting all the things that you want your kids to be involved in. And now, here we are, we have a terrific program, the Youth Media Program, which that's right up here. My sons have been in the orchestra since the fourth grade. I cherish that program. My sons have been in the Boy Scouts for a number of years. And I know they'll be Eagle Scouts, I know they will be. And I cherish that program. My sons have been in the LACTV Media Program, uh, and I cherish that program. I know that my sons, I know everybody in that program are going to go places. And it's going to be a direct result of the people in that, that program. And not only that, but those are our future, those are our youth that are going to be sitting in your seats maybe someday. And that's what we're hoping for. And that's what we, you know, that's what we're trying to do with our kids. So, you know, I just want to stress, you know, um, I know it's tough trying to, uh, you know, balance budgets and things like that, but this to me is like a, it's like a conservation land. You do not want to mess with it. It's growing and growing. I mean, we, Erin has to turn people away. She has to do criteria to get people in that program so that she can weed people out. She has to, uh, give them tests, she has to, there's so many things that she does that's amazing. Um, my son, sometimes he does the robotics here. You might know him, my son Matt, and he's a terrific kid. I mean, he's got unbelievable skills and the confidence mainly directly related to that program. So for all the parents that couldn't be here, there were a number of them, I promised them that I would speak for them and just beseech you to, you know, take a second look, take a second look at this. And, I mean, we would, we would never think about getting rid of our, and I know that this is, this is just something that I'm putting it up there with, but our, our music program and our LACTV Media Program are all a part of our community and they make us really special. I mean, there's other things too that make us special, our sports, our, um, you know, our community services, our Boy Scouts, I can't say enough about them, and our firefighters and, you know, I'd like to thank you all for, and your police, the police. I mean, we've had, we've got an awesome community. I'm just asking you not to mess with LACTV. Please, if you could.
What was your name again?
Uh, Deborah Sullivan.
Deborah, just, just so you understand for clarification purposes, we're not asking for Erin to be removed. The, the information that was sent out from Cable Services is incorrect. We never asked for Erin to be removed. If I wind back to history, last year, the council looked and said, we need to eliminate a position, okay? Through the town manager's budget, okay? The director came up and said, you know what? Don't eliminate the position, I'm going to retire. We said, okay, we won't eliminate the position, we'll work with you for a year. We came to budget hearings this year, the director said, I had said I'm going to retire. I'm not retiring. I can't retire till September. We said, we said, but we'll work with you till September. Then this whole article comes out and says, here we go again to getting rid of Erin. Nobody's getting rid of Erin. We didn't, that, that's not what we said. We said nothing of the sort. We only repeated back what the director told us. That's what she told us. And I have a transcript of exactly what she said here from the DVD from the cable studio.
Okay.
So, you heard what I said to the kids. I meant every word of it.
And just to reiterate-
I just, I just want you to know. That's how we got here.
Right, and I was, I was there last year as well.
The cable studio is a bad place. We agree with, we think the things you're saying are positive and we agree. We didn't say any of that. It wasn't our idea, idea to tell the director to retire. It's her idea.
And I wasn't, and I was saying, let's not get-
Just so you know.
I wasn't saying, let's not get, get rid of, uh, Erin. I was saying, let's not, let's, let's keep it all intact. So whatever that means, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but what was sent out was inaccurate. Just so we're clear. What was sent out was that we want, here we go again, we're trying to eliminate the trainer. Well, ma'am. That was completely inaccurate.
And so you're, are you, are you, are you saying that this program would still be intact? Eliminating anyone?
I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm not responsible for that area. What we, what we asked her, what we asked the director for, based on her promise of saying she would retire, is give us a budget with two people and let us take a look at it. To my knowledge, she hasn't submitted one with two people, she's only submitted one with three. That's what we asked for. We asked to submit one with two. It wasn't our idea. She said, I'll retire, please keep Erin. We said, okay. That's what happened.
And is there a way that we could continue this with three people? Is there a way?
Dave, has she submitted a budget for three, two people yet?
What Dottie submitted was a list of responsibilities for each of the three people, which ones were priorities, which ones would be eliminated.
So we've asked her multiple times to submit a budget for two people and she hasn't.
Right. What we, what was submitted was a list of responsibilities of the three people currently and which responsibilities, in her view, would continue with two people, which ones would not continue with two people.
Okay, so we never got a budget with two people from the department head that we asked for?
I don't have a money budget, no, but I have a list of responsibilities.
Okay, so we're not trying to be hard about this? Just want to put it all out, that, that, that's how we got here. No one, no one thinks that the programs that are being run over there aren't good, that we have a good town, people are good people, they're doing good things. I mean, the kids did a great job. We're going off a, that was her plan. It wasn't mine. It wasn't any of these guys. That was the plan that she gave us. Said, okay, this is what I'm going to do.
And so if they came back and said they needed three people, is that not an option? Is that what you're saying?
That's a different discussion. That's a different discussion.
Okay.
We, the discussion we've had on the table since budget time is, is that, you know, I, I'm not retiring. I, I have here where she said she was. But, you know, so we got to get to the bottom of this one way or the other.
Okay.
But that's, that's, they've done good things there. We, I personally agree. I can't speak for anybody else, but I agree, I think they've done good things. I think Erin's done a good job with the kids. But that's how we got where we are right now. Not what was sent out to you from the cable studio. That isn't what happened.
Right, and so I guess with my closing, um, I would just say that, so what, what I'm, what I'm hearing you say, what I'm hearing you say is that, that, that as long as that program can function with the amount of people that you're stipulating, um, then that everything will be the same. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
According to the town charter, we-
And we're saying, can we keep this program as is with the amount of people that we have? Since it's flowing so nicely?
I don't know.
Okay.
And we don't cross that line on the charter. That's between the town manager and the department head. But what we've asked for and have yet to receive is a number budget for two people. So we're not trying to be, we're not trying to be hard about this, we're just, we're, we're asking questions, that's what we're supposed to do.
So can we renegotiate three people?
Well, that's, that's why we're having public hearings here. This is, I guess you could call this, this is one big negotiation.
Okay.
But then again, we could say that and we could put a budget together that has those people in it. This could go to the deliberative session and they could say, well, no, you're going to go with this budget and then we have to, the town manager's already told us, we'd have to cut people. So, but I just want you to have a full slate of the facts.
I do, I, I, I have this, I have the slate, I have that.
You know, I don't think, I don't think anybody up here thinks that the kids aren't benefiting greatly.
And I have a, I have a lot of skills and background in family mediation. This family is really too big for me.
Good for you.
But I guess, I guess in closing then, what I'm saying is, can we keep the, if, for me, from my standpoint, let's keep all the people we have there and keep it all as is, if we can, if we can.
Thank you very much.
Dottie Grover, Director of Cable Services. I guess, um, not used to being put in a position of defending, but I'm going to just take a moment and, uh, just, um, hopefully be able to explain to you what my perception is of what's gone on in the last six months or so. Um, last year, when, uh, we were talking budget things, it came up that, um, maybe we should go to a hearing. And I believe, Tom, you're the one who discussed going to a hearing on the, um, the decisions that were being considered. We did that. And John, I totally remember that I said that I was planning to retire in 2012. I never had a specific date. In the back of my mind, one of my expectations was that it would be between September and December of that month. And I also went back and I read the transcript and then I went back and I watched the video verbatim because I was concerned that I may have, in the moment, given you incorrect information. I certainly understand how someone listening to that and being, and working on a 2012 budget might have made, drawn the conclusion that I said 2012 and I meant the 2012 budget. And I'm sorry, I was thinking calendar year, not fiscal year, so I do apologize for how that might have misled anybody. It was unintentionally, I assure you. As far as, uh, whether or not the position is what was being considered and whose position it was, I was called about, you guys usually get your agendas, I think, on Thursday night or Friday. I was called on Tuesday of that week when you got your budget for the first time. And I was told that the amount that was going to be requested was going to be $65,000. And I said, $65,000? Yes. And is that the position of the trainer? And I was told that it was the position of the trainer. So I have not drawn any conclusions out of the air. That's what I was told at that time.
Hold on one second. Hold on. For clarification, the town manager would like to talk.
The amount of money taken from the budget-
Just clarification.
Was the trainer position. It's been made very clear on numerous occasions that that is not necessarily the position that has to be taken out of the budget. The reason the trainer position was selected is that that is the least expensive position in the budget. So it would give maximum flexibility with the remaining funds to redefine the two jobs, so. Correct. The training money, the money for the trainer was identified. It was made very clear though, that that, that necessarily was not the position to be eliminated.
It was made clear later. It definitely was, I don't disagree with you. But at that conversation that we had, which was pretty brief, because I, I remember telling you that I really could not support that position because I felt the trainer was an integral part of the facility. Later on, yes, you did say that whatever amount, whatever position went, that was the amount of money that you were looking for. And you did say that later. But when we started, it was a person. And it has been perceived as a person since because of the dollar amount. You can't get rid of, of my salary for that amount. You can't get rid of the, um, uh, public information coordinator, my assistant, with that amount of money. So that has continued. Uh, I think we were very careful when we wrote the newsletter to make sure that people just knew that something was going to be happening at this hearing, at the next hearing, as far as the cable and its budget. And that if they needed to, needed to, wanted to, had an opinion, whatever, that they should step up and have their say. I've never told anybody in my entire life how to vote on something or what to say about something. I don't take free speech just as part of my job, I take it as part of my life. I think it's very important that people always be allowed to speak their piece. I have learned a lot from people that I didn't even like because I was willing to stop and listen and they would say something that was beneficial. As far as saying that we could get along with two versus three, when Dave asked me for, um, a $10,000 reduction in the budget that was currently pending for the board. And I moved those numbers around eight ways to Sunday. And no matter what I did, the only thing that would, it would come out as is the budget he had submitted minus $10,000. So my response to him was that I had tried a dozen different ways and didn't see anything different. And that the $10,000, if he was looking for my, um, opinion as to where that could come from, I was just taking it out of equipment versus taking it and getting out of personnel. So that was the, the two people versus three people. I also had said last year, um, when we were discussing this and discussing my retirement, that I thought it was only reasonable to keep our minds open to the fact that it could be three people that are needed. So I retire. Very likely that the next person coming in behind me probably wouldn't start at the same rate of pay as I am. So you've got a savings there. And let that new person, who is going to be the director, look at how things worked and figure out what they thought was best. And be willing to listen as to whether or not they needed two people or three people. That's all I asked at that time. And I would still ask that same thing. The retirement thing, I am absolutely retiring in 2012. I don't have a date for you because I have not met with the people that I need to meet with. My first appointment to do that is on January 20th, it was as soon as I could get one. But I promise you that unless it's going to lose me a ton of money, I will retire as soon as I possibly can to leave this open. So that the person that is already employed, could continue to be employed, you've heard her praises on here. And I think that not a matter of, you know, I'm not going to lose her, I would be retired. It would be the community that would lose those specific skills, those special skills that she has that helps not only the children that, that Ms. Sullivan was just talking about, but also the, um, job opportunities kids. The ones that come out of summer special ed classes. Those kids are doing very well with her too and those people sing her praises. So that's why I think we need to be, hang on to her, okay? And why maybe I hung on a little harder than, uh, some people expected that I should or would. But I do feel that that's extremely important. I hope that you can understand that this has been my life's work for the last twenty-three, twenty-four years. And I want to leave it in good condition with the people who remain behind. I don't want to leave them with the problem that they have to overcome. So that's all I have to say. And again, John, I do apologize for leading you astray with the 2012 number. And I will, in 2012, and make that clear, that's the calendar year. If I talk to the retirement people and they say, June 30th is good, then June 30th will be it and you will be the second to know, right after me, okay? Because I am a little tired. So, did anybody have any questions?
I, I do, Dottie. I'm, I'm understanding your, your, your position here. What, what I have a question about is, how are we supposed to evaluate the budget when you're not submitting to the town manager your proposed budget at three people?
I did.
She didn't submit one for two people.
I, I submitted the budget to him for three, which was my original budget, which you have in your packets with your, by your budget lines. And then for the two, my response was that he would just take, he had already done one for two people. And that the only change I would make in that, although I didn't agree with the budget per se, the change I would suggest was if another $10,000 had to come off, take it out of the equipment line.
Well-
off, take it out of the equipment line. And I have, I have, I have honestly always responded.
Okay.
I've got tons of paper.
Well, I guess the other question I have is this, since it's your change that now is being accommodated.
You mean my retirement? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, right, yeah. Have you looked at anywhere else you could cut? I mean, you have a replacement of equipment, and I don't know what the requirements are as far as legal, because frankly, at this point, because of the change in circumstances, I don't really care about any kind of equipment coming in. I don't care if it's broken. That's $52,000 bucks. Now, I understand from Dave that you might be required by the contract to use some of that money.
$28,000-
Okay.
Has, is, is the number, per year, that's given for capital equipment. Prior to this, this last contract, it was $20,000.
Okay, so that leaves $24,000.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, but what I'm, what I'm hoping you would come up with is how you're going to make up this shortfall, at least some way of coming up with it. And I think frankly, it's incumbent upon you, since this change is, you know, your change.
When you say shortfall, are you saying between-
Well, if we're going to keep three people, if we're going to keep three people-
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
You've got X amount of money, and what about you coming, giving a first pass at how you're going to operate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, well, here's, here's my, I have the information that I need. I have approximately $388,000 plus coming in, over the course of 12 months.
But here's another parameter, the 104 comes, you know, the 104 is the other part of the parameter.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'd like to see you work with that as, that's still coming to the town, to the general fund.
But it-
But you can try.
It can, that can happen with the three-person budget, and $104,000 still going into the general fund. If that's, I know some of the general, brought some legal issues or whatever, some procedures, but if that turns out to be something that can be done, yeah, that can be done, and still not hurt the, the operating budget and the personnel at, at the studio. What can happen is going forward on an ongoing basis, if the town continues to take $104,000 and transfer that into the general fund, then we will not only lose the reserve that we have tried to build, we will also end up being in a hole and would have to make tremendous cuts.
Well-
Do I understand you wrong?
I understand that, but that's, in a sense, next year's problem.
Okay.
Right now, it's this year's problem.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So for this year, you're saying, can I find the $104,000?
No, whatever it takes to get a third person on, to keep the third person, with, as long as the town gets the, the general fund gets the $104,000.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, I mean, I just think, whether it can be done or not, I don't know, but at least I would hope that you'd try to do that for us, so that we're looking at a number-
I believe that the budget that I submitted originally would, would do that.
And the town gets $104,000 in the general fund?
Yep. Yeah, because I never have looked to the reserve-
So you pull it out of the reserve?
That's, it would have to come out of there.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, but I'm, what I'm, my point being that, yes, you can do that this year, you can do, did it last year or the year before, money has been coming out of that fund, but on an ongoing basis, eventually, there's no money to pull from.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay.
You know, and that may be what happens, but-
I hope not. I hope not. I think we do perform a service, I think that most of you are appreciative of the service that we perform. And in fact, you said something at one of the last, most recent meetings, John, about something that had been discussed, it was kind of a hard discussion, but you were glad that it took place in public, and that you got to shine the light on it. We're shining the light. We're the ones with the cameras that are showing everybody what's going on with their town government. We're the ones that help you establish transparency in what you do. And we're also the ones that are now, and can definitely in the future, help you with one of your FY13 goals, or 12 goals, about communication. We're it, we're good at it, we know what we're doing, and we'll help you. So, thank you for letting me have my say, I appreciate it very much. Anything else?
I just wanted to say that I, it's my hope that your retirement decision, as well as anybody, any other employee's retirement decision, is based on your decision and not what you perceive the council wanting you to do, or anyone else wanting you to do. You need to make those decisions, that decision, what's best for you, based on your benefit package and the retirement package that you have.
I will have to be practical.
Right, so if, if there's any perception that, that you're getting squeezed, or you're getting shown the door, or whatever, I want to, I want to put that perception to bed, that that's a decision you make privately with your family, on your own terms, and we'll deal-
Puppies voting for retirement.
We'll, we'll, we have to deal with the budget consequences, that's a different decision, a different issue. But from a personnel policy standpoint, that your retirement decision and the date associated with that is your personal decision, it's not, not really any of our business.
I appreciate you saying that.
And I also, as the chairman, would like to say that I don't appreciate some of the people's innuendos that have been thrown out here for that. So-
Oh.
About your retirement and being squeezed and pushed out. So, thank you, Doty.
Thank you.
Mike, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. We actually, I was here to actually just speak about the, the one issue, which was the franchise fee, and it looks like it's parsed off into two separate issues, but they're kind of interrelated. So if you'll bear with me, Dave, relative to the franchise fee, if I'm not mistaken, I know it's a year ago, I believe that you brought forward some detailed information for the then council to take into under advisement, relative to what other cable studios do in terms of staffing, and in terms of what they do with their franchise fee.
That's correct.
Can you, without putting you on the spot, can you kind of just summarize, I think what I heard last year, which, which is that some towns take all 5% and put it into the general fund, some take a portion, et cetera?
Sorry, they vary from community to community, that's correct.
Right. And there was no indication that what those other communities were doing was in any way, shape, or form illegal, or there was any problems with doing that? It appears to have been established that it's done elsewhere, and we're doing it here now.
Just to be clear, there are no federal estate laws which requires the town to use franchise fee revenues for cable-related purposes.
Okay. So I believe for the counselors who were here last year, as well as myself up there, that was part of the data that we used when we were taking this into, into account, okay? Whether people believe that that's right or not, that's a personal opinion, but I think it's important to establish that fact for tonight. I'm a cable user, a long, longtime cable user, I pay into the fee, and, and I have no, no real issue with the policymakers establishing a certain portion of that fee to be put into the general fund for the benefit of, of reducing the tax rate to me as a taxpayer and anyone else. So I, I'm one cable user that doesn't hold the hard and fast line that every single percent of my fee needs to go to the cable studio. I disagree with that completely as a cable user and a taxpayer, and someone who's charged that fee. I believe that's a policy decision that you're elected to make. I mean, if we elect you folks to make policy decisions, it's perfectly fine to question those decisions, that's how government, open government works, but I don't think you should be accused of doing anything illegal, or being accused of anything improper, and I don't think that was the case. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that, that one of the reasons Dave presented in the budget last year, some changes in staffing relative to the cable studio, is it was a very difficult economic time. It continues to be a very difficult economic time. We can argue that, but I think that's pretty much established. And he, as the town manager, needed to find some ways to help manage the, the goal last year, which was to deliver a flat tax rate to our citizens. Sorry. Apologize, Mike. And I, I can tell you that, you know, when I was sitting up here, the reason there was a discussion about staffing at the cable studio was directly related to Dave's budget proposal, which was directly related to the goal that we gave him as the council. We wanted to deliver a flat tax. He proposed a budget that did that. It did include some changes to the staffing model at the cable studio. He provided us with data showing that cable studios in other towns, generally speaking, don't have the level of full-time employees we have here. That doesn't mean it's right or wrong, it's just a data, a piece of data that needs to be established, that that was part of the thinking. And I, as one member of that council, we were leaning towards agreeing with Dave's changes. We were then presented with a different option by several of the people who were in this room, history's repeating itself tonight. Okay? All I can tell you is, it's all about expectations. The expectation by three counselors who's still up there, and myself who was there, was that we agreed to keep the staffing the way it was, in lieu of changes that were going to take place in staffing voluntarily for this budget season. So Dave wrote in his budget message for this year, two policy decisions need to be considered by the council. The key is policy decisions, that's what you're elected to do, okay? First, the council approved an FY12 budget with three positions funded with the expectation that staff levels would be reduced to two in FY13 due to retirements. That's what I heard as well. We can talk about the nuances of what was said, it's all about expectations, and I think those expectations were relatively clear, that the council, then council, was going to agree with Dave's changes. We decided not to, in lieu of making those changes this year, okay? It's up to you, as policymakers, not me, as to whether you want to move forward with that, make some kind of change, do something different, but it's important to establish that was the expectation. That is true, okay? Whatever you do, as a taxpayer and a cable user, I'm not in favor of you increasing the tax rate that I'm going to pay by making any additional, putting money back into the cable reserve fund. I want you to move forward with the 1.5% that Dave's proposing, I don't want that 0.03% put back into my tax rate, so whatever you come up with, I don't want to, I don't want it affecting my tax rate. And whatever you do come up with, I'll support, because I elected you to make policy decisions, and I'd be fine with whatever you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, Chairman, sorry about that, it's the end of the quarter in the software business, and the other people-
Before, Patrick, before you speak, Ms. Qualley, I'm sorry. I want to have other people that haven't been to the mic already. Please, thank you.
Chairman, you made a comment. Just so, I know that this is an emotional discussion as part of the budget, but just to put it in perspective, this is a $265,000 line item, and there's still another $26 million on the table, so I guess I would encourage us, as I'm looking at the clock, that at some point in time, we give the public an opportunity to expand the discussion to the, to the other 99% of the budget that we're considering. I think we have one more public hearing, was it the 12th day, our next public hearing is the 12th, I believe?
January 12th, that's correct.
So we have time with another meeting, but we certainly don't want to get just through 1% of the budget here, so I-
So what do you, what do you want to put your capital on?
I guess I should, I think we should give people an opportunity to speak, but I'm just saying that, that there's, there's, there's a lot more budget to consider, and-
I disagree.
So I would encourage people to maybe expand their perspective a little bit, and, as I'd like to hear about, continue to hear about this, but like to hear about the, what people's thoughts are about the, the other line items in the budget as well, before we run out of time.
Okay.
I didn't, no, no offense, and I would be very interested to hear what you-
Thanks a lot, Tom. Put me on the spot, I really appreciate that. No. My name is Cindy Eaton, 16, Clark Road. I guess I had to, I have to say this, this much. I'm a taxpayer as well as Mike Brown is, and I do want, and I'm a cable user, I pay the fee, and I do want my cable fee, the all, the whole 5% of it, to go to the cable access department. I don't want everyone else benefiting from the fee that I pay, and that's what happens. Other, you know, it's kind of like a double tax. And we went through this last year, I'll try and make it brief, we went through this last year, we went through this whole process. I thought that it was for one year, and I don't understand what happened. You had a resolution that you voted on, and I believe that resolution was for one year to take the 105 or 104, whatever it was. And that year isn't up yet. So why are we talking about this?
We're working on the 2013 budget.
Okay, but we still said one year, so-
Dave, what did the exact language, I believe that it was for that year, and then we, we would revisit it yearly?
The resolution was for FY12 only, which can be revisited at any time. The reason it's back on the table now is we're discussing the FY13 budget.
So are you planning on making that resolution again for the, for 2013?
I don't think it's a plan, but it's a possibility.
It, it sounds like you are, if this is, this is the budget.
Well, it could be for two and a half, it could be for two and a half percent, it could be for 1%, it could be for 5%. That's what, that's what we're working through, trying to figure out where the money's going to come from to pay for everything.
Okay, but, you know, it's confusing when you say that it was for one year, and suddenly the next year, and how am I to know that it might go on and on and on? And there goes the cable fee, there goes the cable access department, because there's no more money to keep it running.
I can actually tell you-
But that's not what, that's not really what I wanted to talk about. What I wanted to talk about is the fact that eight years ago, three people were hired, or a third person, I should say, was hired for the studio. And it sounds to me like the studio is booming, and we do, we do need three people. For eight years, we've needed three people. And it sounds like we could even use three and a half people, actually, with all the things that are happening in the studio. And I would like you to go over to the studio sometime and volunteer, and see what goes on there, to see what the director of the facility does, what the trainer does, what the technology person does. And it is a very special facility, because it deals with volunteers. So when a volunteer walks in the door, you can't just say, oh, hi, you know, there's the equipment, go to it. You need someone, the director, to sit down with that person and explain what this is all about, and then get them trained. And if they want to know some, some things about technology, there's a technology person there as well, although I know that he does mostly programming, and keeps the website and the online stream going. So I'm asking that you keep three positions in that, in the budget. Yes, I don't like having my taxes go up, but I also don't want my franchise fees being used elsewhere. I want them for the whole 5%. And just to give you some history, we did take 5% of that for many, many years. It's just been, over the past four years that I'm aware of, that it, it's been cut to three and a half. So I know it's hard times, but if we keep doing this, we're going to lose something that, one of the dairy- that Londonderry should be proud of. Thank you.
Question. Never mind.
So, so, hold on a second.
No, I, never mind.
I just had a, just my own curiosity. Hypothetically, if we walked over right now and boarded up the cable center and shut it down, would we still get a franchise fee?
That's correct. Yes.
I think the other interesting thing, Tom, we worked out last year was, is taking a 1.5% over like a 10-year period, we still had money. And if we took 2.5% and dropped to two bodies, we still had money. We ran all that math and everything last year. And the same argument can be made that we've, we've heard multiple times. We have the same number of police officers as we did in 1989. We have the same number of firemen. We have the same number of DPW people. Dave prepared a, I asked him to prepare something that we'll probably need here at some point. We're down how many town employees we have over the last 10 years. We're not up, we're down. So we have three people run the planning department, just so we get a little perspective.
Just my other part of that is, of course, you know, I don't know. If I don't have cable, I could still go use the access center, right?
If you Google cable access fees, a, a lot of portions of the country talk about it as right-of-way fees, not as franchise fees.
They're renting the lines to get the cable to their customers.
Some, some have made arguments that, that, you know, it pays for the right-of-way for cable to get to your house, and that, that's town right-of-way. There's been arguments made in multiple directions.
And that's not like a forever thing. There's so many years, and then you have to renegotiate the fee, right?
I believe that's correct.
So if we got no fee, how would we fund the cable center?
With tax dollars.
Well, the taxes are going to go up anyway if you put the $100,000 back.
Dave, that fee, wasn't it also part of Comcast agreement as to being the only game in town?
Well, no. State law prohibits an exclusive contract, but realistically, you will not find another cable company will come in under our density and cable over Comcast to provide a, a competing service. It's just, it's not economically justifiable. It just doesn't work. So in essence, in essence, it is an exclusive contract, but it can't be by the letter, by the letter of the law.
Okay. Come on up, Marty.
Martin Suge, 17 Wimbledon Drive. This is a classic case of wants versus needs. I think we've seen in the budget hearings before, the town has made it very clear it wants a fully-staffed police department, a fire department, and the roads working. And it's nice to have a cable studio, but not, you know, it's not necessary. It's nice that the, you know, the kids in the schools are learning how to run cable operations and stuff like that, but is that the core mission of the school? To a certain extent, it is, but again, it's, it's on the outside fringes of a, of a core curriculum. I think we need to look at, you know, the whole picture in the town. If the fee, if that fee goes back into the cable studio, that means the tax rate goes up. And it's not just going up for the two-income earners in this town. It goes up for the elderly. It goes up for the one-income earner. It goes up for the blue collar. You can't forget these people who are on fixed incomes and can't always take this big hike in fees all the time, every year, year after year. And one of the questions I have is, if we say we keep the funds into the cable fund, and every year, they don't spend an entire amount, it goes into the undesignated fund, how high can that fund go?
There's no limit by state law.
So it can go up to $1 million, $2 million? Then what? What can you do with it?
You can use it for, like, like Richard said, once it goes into the special revenue fund, you can only expend that on the purpose for which it was deposited into the fund, so for cable purposes.
You can, you can have the Taj Mahal of cable.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that, are we building an NBC studio here? I mean, come on, let's be realistic. The cable studio can't even give me a realistic number of how many people view the channels every night. I'm kind of surprised they didn't put that into the cable agreement on what the, what the ratings are, considering that we have five channels, which is much more than most towns. And, and most towns, from what I remember last year, have two people in the cable operations. So I, I think, again, this is a want, not necessarily that we have to staff fully, and I think we need to take care, look at the bigger picture. As I drive to work, I still see homes in foreclosure. I still see homes for sale. I see businesses empty in town. I'm sorry, but, you know, again, as I said before, I didn't get a pay raise. Now, this is the fourth year going over the last six, eight years. You know, it, it has to end. These are difficult decisions, but they have to be made, and somewhere along the way, we have to hold a line to the spending and say, "I'm sorry, but we can't do any more." But I think that's, to me, that's the bottom line. And as a full disclosure, I'm a satellite TV viewer, so I don't pay the franchise fee.
We're going to move on.
The Swally Vitale, 75, Marmot Road. I have two things to say, two questions. One, Mike Brown mentioned the fact that last year, they went through and see which towns had what, which had cable fees, which has nothing. Londonderry, the town of Londonderry, has the best cable franchise in the country. I know, because for two years, I went, I went to California for a conference. Everybody was surprised, and that was four years ago. Everybody was surprised what this town does. Then the following year, I went to Tampa, and again, they were surprised what we do. We have the best running, including Massachusetts. We were up in Maine at another conference, and they also made the comments about, "We're better than Massachusetts. We're better than Maine. We're better than Vermont, and we're better than New York." I checked New York, because I was going to move to New York, and I checked for the cable. They have cable services there, but no volunteers. All they put on is gem shows for selling gems, government shows, and that's basically it. There's no public service. And the reason why we have the best, we hire the good people, but we have the money to use. Now, the next thing I was, was saying, was, was going to say, Article VII. Article VII is self-funding funds. Sewer, everybody who has sewer pays it in their monthly sewer charges. Police outside details, they work.
Thank you.
The money goes in that fund, and they pay the police. No tax impact on, on the town whatsoever. Same way with the cable division. Now, Dave asked Dottie to cut $10,000 out of her budget. Where's that $10,000 going, Dave? Back into the reserve fund?
Back into the reserve fund?
I asked, well, where is that $10,000 going?
If the budget is, is reduced by $10,000, okay, that's entirely separate from the process of where the franchise fees are allocated. If there are funds left over in the cable division budget at the end of the year, that goes into the special revenue fund.
Right. But so, I mean, there's 260, now, is this 265, 132, minus the 10,000?
That's two, that's the recommended budget based upon two personnel.
But the problem is, that, that, you, you ask to cut the budget. All you're doing is ta, is putting money back into the reserve fund. They have the money in the reserve fund to take care of it, and, and like Dottie says, also to take care of your $104,000 for this year. She has the funds, so why cut her, why try to cut? It has no impact on the, on the tax rate. Most of the year, what we're, what we'll be voting on is Article IV, which affects our tax rate. Article VII does not. Tom wanted to cut out the $52,000 for equipment. It just goes back to the reserve fund. But the problem is, everybody thinks they can rate it by, but to see the problem, what's in the reserve fund now has to be used for cable. The 1.5% that you guys got is what's coming in every year. You're going to get 1.5 of the franchise fees that Comcast gives us, but what's in the reserve fund, you cannot touch by state law and also by your warrant articles. So why are you asking her to cut her budget? I don't understand. I don't understand.
Well, I'm a little confused as well, okay?
Because the bottom line is Article IV. Yeah, we have to exit, we have to, which, we have to, on Article 10 through Article 14, or Article 15, will wind up affecting. Now, the capital, you know, I don't know about Article 5 or Capital 6, but, I mean, Article VII then.
Yeah, well, we're going to work on Article IV now. Would you like, you wanted to give them a little?
I'll respond when I research my records regarding this $10,000 reduction in expenses.
Thank you.
I think it's clear that way.
Okay. All right, we're going to move to Article II, Highway Reconstruction Bond. We, as David said, that's going to move, yep, I got it. That's going to be a separate discussion in January. We're going to have that for the bond. Article III is Expendable Maintenance Trust. Pick it up here to the council.
I think the bond, our discussions that last weekend...
December 28th.
That's the 28th one? Oh, I'm sorry. So that's December 28th is when we're going to be hearing the Highway Reconstruction Bond. Okay. So let's see, Article III, Expendable Maintenance Trust, council? Any questions on that?
I'm good.
Budget committee? Okay. Anybody in the public? Any questions on Article III, Expendable Maintenance Trust? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. It's actually a question in general that Dave can probably answer, because if you're going to go through these in a serial fashion, if, if I'm reading Dave's budget presentation correctly, please, let's see, sorry. It's proposed that capital reserve and maintenance trusts be funded at 1.135 million dollars in the FY-13 budget, of which Article III that we're talking about are now, Article V, Article VI, and Article IX make up that number. Is that correct, Dave?
What number is that, Mike?
The, your FY-13 recommended funding amount for capital reserve and maintenance trusts is 1.135 million. And if I'm reading tonight's agenda correctly, if we're going to go through these articles, that would, that total number is made up between four articles, Article III, V, VI, and IX.
Three, it should be three, V, and VI. I'll have to check on IX, but Article III is the only article that deals with the Expendable Maintenance Trust.
Right.
And similar to previous years, the requested appropriation is $200,000, which is offset by general fund, undesignated fund balance of $100,000, resulting in a net to be raised of $100,000 or 3, 3 cents impact on tax rate.
Okay. The reason, the reason I'm bringing this up, who's the vice chair? Mr. Vice Chair, is that I'm interested in providing comments on the aggregate of the total number for the Capital Reserve and Maintenance Trust versus each individual article. So I'm not sure where and how to give that comment, those comments.
Dave, could you get that number for us?
Yeah, that, Mike is correct. It is Article III. Article V is, is the existing capital reserve funds for our police, I mean, for our fire and highway equipment. Article VI proposed for a new capital reserve fund for small equipment for the fire department, and the Route 9, Route 102 corridor study is Article IX, which is a non-capital reserve fund to go through that corridor study, which was presented to the council. Those are the four issues.
Okay. So I guess what I'll say is that, as I mentioned in my comments at the last meeting that you had, I do understand the spirit and intent of what Dave's doing in terms of raising, raising the amount in the capital reserves and, and maintenance trusts. The FY-12 budget was 525,000 for that total. It's being proposed to be increased to 1.135, which is an increase of 116%. So I guess what I'm saying as one taxpayer is that while I understand the spirit and intent of, of catching up in those areas, those particular areas that were reduced over the course of the last couple of budgets, I, I am uncomfortable, given the economic times, I am uncomfortable increasing those four articles to the point where it's 116% and the tax rate for that area goes from zero tax impact last year to 12 cents this year. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as a general statement, and then I'm hoping the council kind of looks at each one of these four articles and comes to a consensus that maybe 116% increase in this economic times is a little bit beyond what we should be doing relative to the tax impact it's going to have.
But isn't part of the problem with that 116% your denominator is last year, and if you were inordinately low last year, you're going to increase the percentage?
Well, you're the CPA, Tom, so I'm not going to be able to hold, hold an argument with you here.
Well, I think you were around 300,000. Well, no, I can't, it's wrong. It's, I think the maintenance trust, you were at around 300,000. Article V, for example, and we're at 710, or 350, so.
Yeah.
So I, I think that might be part of it. Whether we should be catching up or not, I don't know, but I, I guess I'd have to know is what the, what the calculus was last year when you were 300,000. If that was the, the number, fine, but if you deferred things for years, then maybe it's not an accurate use of that percentage.
Well, let me, let me rephrase it, and then I'll let some other folks speak. I understand the spirit and intent of trying to catch up. I acknowledge that, that needs to be done. Given that there isn't a dramatic change in last year's economy versus this year's economy, I don't think catching up at that level of a percent increase, whatever the numbers are, is appropriate, given the tax impact that it's going to have, which is essentially a zero tax impact in last year's budget to a 12 cent tax impact this year. I think there's some, somewhere in between that the council should strive for to help lessen the impact on the taxpayer. That's what I'm saying. Follow through with the spirit and intent of trying to increase those lines based on Dave's proposal versus funding it at the level that he's asking. I think there's a, there's a compromise in that strikes the balance between delivering less of a tax impact, but catching up a little bit more than the previous years.
Maybe once, maybe one could ask the school board to look at maybe further reducing some of their budget. Just saying.
So I have a question.
I don't understand...
It won't be about the school board. Dave?
Is this a town council meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
For how many years did we underfund and how much? How many years did we underfund and for how much?
I believe we, we revised the plan for a period of three years, and, and just for, just for the council's information, look at a net tax impact. The additional tax dollars requested to be raised, although the gross appropriation is same for Article III, the trust funds is $25,000. Article V, the capital reserve fund, is 35,000. The reason there's a large gross appropriation number is because we had past projects which were not completed. South Londonderry Sewer, which was raised by the taxpayers about 10 years ago, and that, for our auditor, has been lapsed in the general fund requesting that that be re-appropriated to the capital reserve fund. The fire department equipment, equipment capital reserve, a new fund for the fire department's small equipment, the net tax impact is 50,000, and the corridor study is a new item, $75,000, 30,000 UFDs, so net of 45. So of all those, all those issues we're looking at, the additional funds to be raised off the tax rate is $155,000, as proposed for FY-13.
So how much did we short it for, for the last, how many years we've been shorting the fund?
Just to give you an example, is that the original plan for capital reserve... for Capital Reserve was to raise last year $250,000. On the tax rate, we raised 220. The trust fund was supposed to be 100,000 and we raised 75. And the previous year was a little more dramatic. So my estimation is, in total, it's probably in the range of $200,000 tax impact, between where we should be today as opposed to where we currently are.
So for the last three to four budgets, we've shorted the fund $200,000 and you're asking for an additional 150,000 this year?
Well, for the, for the.
To make up that 200,000.
Right, but apples to apples, to make up the 200,000, we're looking at 60,000 this year. The other two funds are new.
Okay.
We're looking just at Expendable Trust. In Capital Reserve, we're looking, we're requesting an increase of $60,000 from the tax base.
Okay. Just, is everyone equally as muddy on that now?
Clear as mud.
We'll get you information in visual. It's a lot easier to look at.
I understand, but the, so the numbers are, those are closer. All right, thank you.
What are the articles that, just so everybody's watching at home can keep track, the articles that this encompasses are?
The two existing trust funds.
Which is, what article number again? Three?
Three. Is Articles three and five.
Yep.
The new trust funds for consideration in FY13 are Articles six and nine.
Incidentally, the fire trust fund, I think, was recommended by the CIP and then the planning board. Because of all the small equipment they now carry on all the different trucks, we recommended then, instead of them going out and buying it, that we would either reserve for it. There was talk of bonding it, but I think it was more now we're reserving for it.
Yeah, we reserve for it or else lease it, but I don't think we bonded though.
This is, this is every, we tried to figure out, I think we tried to figure out if we could. But it's all that stuff they carry on the trucks to do all those things they do. Right, guys?
Absolutely.
Dave and Sue, with regard to the, what Dave said he's going to go back and do and look at the numbers, when you come back with that, could you help us understand the strategic plan around the catch-up? Because it's, we're not doing it all in one year.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
So what, what your thoughts are? I know we can't, you know, with the caveat that we can't burden future councils, at least we can have a strategic plan as to what the, what the line looks like in terms of the catch-up and how many years and what amounts per year.
Sure. Just a couple of the general comments is that we discussed at a previous budget meeting that, given the needs of the highway and fire departments for equipment and rolling stock, even taking FY13 appropriation and increasing the tax impact by $50,000 a year, over a 10-year horizon, we're still going to be short by, I think, about $1 million, primarily because we've got a ladder truck in there at some point. The other comment is starting the Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve. That's always been in the Fire Department operating budget. Unfortunately, when, when times are difficult, that's always the first item to be removed. The, the department submitted a plan which would require $160,000 every year. And frankly, I don't know if we can do that. We can do 150 this year because we have $100,000 in undesigned fund balance to be applied against 150. Not sure if those funds will be there every year as an offset. So those are two issues we requested council consideration, a town meeting consideration, because, you know, we haven't changed our replacement schedule. We haven't, we haven't accelerated the replacement of our vehicles. We kept the same schedule. And I just don't want the town to be in a position, five and 10 years down the road, looking at bonding over multiple years for vehicles. It's just, it's just not good business practice.
Agreed.
Okay.
So can I comment?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so I just wanted to just make a quick comment on it now that I'm following exactly which articles they are. Sorry, I'm a little bit behind, trying to get some research done here. I just wanted to say that, you know, as a few people in town have reminded me, this, this year, it's a question of essential versus non-essential. And that's really what, every time I look at the budget, I actually question in my mind. Is this an essential or a non-essential? And just, I'll share with you really, really quick a visit that I had to the Fire Department with Captain Rogers. And one of the things that he explained to me that some of these funds are for was to, you know, you have these items that you buy, as Counselor John alluded to, that you buy every year and you kind of put them away. You know, you may buy 30 of something and you may use 20. And then you have 10, you know, the backup. Well, they've used the 10. That 10's gone. By, you know, underfunding these things, you're, you're looking at now kind of the rainy day fund, the rainy day equipment, those, those essential pieces of, of life-saving apparatus or, or, um, equipment that they may need to correctly fight a fire or save somebody's life or et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted people to understand that it's not just looking at numbers. We're actually, you know, as councils, we're going to visit, we're going to look at things to make sure that it is essential. I mean, obviously, we trust the people that, that work for us, but at the same time, we, we have to verify. So it was a big eye-opening experience for me to see that and just to try to justify it in my mind that, you know, we had a reserve of items for a long time and that's what we've been kind of dipping into. So just, just wanted to throw that out there too.
Mr. Chair. Anybody from the Budget Committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
So the purpose of establishing these Capital Reserve Funds is to ensure that those funds will be used only for the designated purpose?
Correct.
And that they're, in this case, there will not be a method of diverting those funds from, say, Fire Department equipment to, say?
Cable studio.
General fund.
Cable studio.
For the general revenue?
That's correct.
So these will be used explicitly for the purpose?
Hundred percent.
They're designated, okay.
Hundred percent.
For, to her question, is there, at a later time, that the council could have a vote to have those appropriations moved?
Town meeting has to make that vote. Two-thirds of them.
Just wanted to make sure that was also put out there.
Mm-hmm, very good.
Is this appropriate to ask a question about Article nine? Or are you, we'll do that later?
We'll take that one up separately, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to comment on Article three, Expendable Maintenance Trust? Okay. Moving on to the Article four, General Operating Budget. Okay, so we'll start off with the council. Any, are there any questions from any of the councils right now? Joe, do you want to start off or not?
Okay. Yeah, I just, as we go through this, my, my understanding was that we were looking at default plus $300,000 for, to put on this article. And I had some questions on the usage of that $300,000 as indicated by the media this, this week. And I had questions on specifically looking at how that $300,000 would be used if the town should vote it in. So I had been interested in zeroing out many of the items that the town manager submitted to the council, which were additional above and beyond last year's budget plus any contractual obligations. So it was not cutting police, it was not cutting fire, it was not cutting anybody. The services would be maintained. But there were things that were additional above and beyond that I thought could wait for another day. Three areas that I thought were very important to indicate were overtime salaries, which was also to include snow overtime salaries. And if the way the weather's been going, I hope, I don't jinx ourselves by saying it now. I hope we will save a lot of that. But the other one was gasoline expense. Those were three areas I found to be underfunded to the point that we really needed to look at what we would be, would be using. And I tried to clarify it for the public of those people that are in the audience today that weren't here last time, that in this council's opinion, that the overtime salaries are very essential because it covers the replacement of people while they are sick and while they're on vacation. And this question keeps coming up about, you know, well, can't we hire somebody else, et cetera? You know, and kind of get that $174,000 kind of, you know, down by hiring somebody else. So that's, that's something, obviously, we got to, we got to talk about. But really, what this line item addresses is that specific overtime salary. And then again, the gasoline expenses that, as everybody knows, we are not at $2 a gallon anymore. So we need to really budget that and calculate it based off of the usage. So that was just something I wanted to kind of throw out there again.
Okay, so just checking for understanding. Are you saying you want Dave to put in the gasoline numbers that are in there or you want them to be higher?
No, I just wanted to, there were, I think, 14 items that were indicated that when we asked him to, you know, well, here is what we want you to go back and do. We want you to go back and have the default, to put on the article, default plus $300,000. And we asked him how that would look. So we all got that Excel spreadsheet. And how that looked is that there were some items on there that I felt could be reduced. And so to the point where I tried to make it more of a summary and say that the 174, 32, and 93, 422 of the gasoline expense would be the $300,000 that I would like to indicate. If we were to, if the, if the town was to vote in, the default plus $300,000, I would like to indicate that those would be areas we like to direct those expenses to be funded in. So does that clarify or does that make you more confused? I'm sorry.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want us to go?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, if you have concerns, I want you to bring that up and let's talk about it.
And Dave, on the town clerk's budget, with your reductions for the first $300,000, is there still a part-time intern?
There is. It's one of the.
For 5,000?
That's correct. Yeah, that would be a position to take care of those, those filing and other tasks which we don't, no longer do. What we need to do because of the reduction in staff from previous years.
Okay. I, I would suggest we, we look at foregoing that for this year. In information technology, you have a line item, I think, for 17,000 in replacement computers?
That's, that's the difference between the default and what we recommend is additional $17,000 in expenditures.
Okay. So we could, we, you're, there's a $300,000 gap between default and your budget now, right?
Yes, yeah. Default is pretty much halfway between the default budget and my recommended budget.
So is, is your budget now, does it include the 17,000?
With the $300,000 above default, it does.
Okay.
That's correct.
So if we held off on that, because I, I kind of worked out some numbers to, I think I've shared it with you, to get to default. General government. I think we'd, we'd have to come up with $50,000 or something like that. I was looking towards the library. And I know there's nobody here, I guess, to speak to it. But regarding the reduction in library services. And what was kind of a concern to me was, well, they gave us some broad ideas of what, for example, a $100,000 reduction in the library would be. There's no specifics of it. I mean, just the idea we're going to close Friday, Saturday. I don't even know if that achieves any savings. Are they going to get back to us on those?
They will. They did respond this afternoon that they have an adequate time because they'll hear from me frankly from this morning about additional explanations. So I requested that information be made available so the council could consider it at your December 28 budget workshop.
And just another question. Regarding the days, that if there, if there was closure of the library, is that something that has to be negotiated with the?
I, I need to check the contract. I don't know if that contract specifies hours, unlike some of our other contracts.
It's been a while since I read it. I don't remember hours in it.
However, one of their proposals is to close the library for one week per year. And again, we'll review that. My sense is that issue will have to be negotiated.
Yeah, because that would affect it as a, basically, it would be. Furlough. Furlough.
Exactly. Right.
I'll come back to mine. Todd?
All right, yeah, I just wanted to add a little with regard to a little library budget benchmarking that I've done.
You got it.
I've looked at about nine surrounding communities. In these surrounding communities, it included, of course, our library, the Concord Public Library, the Kelly Library of Salem, Merrimack Public Library, Dover Public Library, Derry Public Library, Bedford Public Library, the Nesmith Library in Wyndham, and the Rogers Memorial Library in Hudson. Of all of those, we are among the top three budgets. The highest one was in Concord, but they service about 41,000 people versus, you know, almost half that here.
There's a lot here, I'm not sure.
Their budget was about 1.5 million. Ours comes in at 1.3 million. And the Salem, Kelly Library came in about 1.4 million. That's all well and good, but where it really breaks down, I broke it down in terms of what does that budget really buy us as a community when we look at the number of hours that they're open? And I looked at it in terms of hours open per week and hours opened, extrapolated that out over a year, divided that number into the total budget number to come up with a dollar amount that it costs our town per open hour of operation. And when you break it down that way, we're only open, for 1.3 million, which is proposed, we're only open 52 hours a week. That makes it, when you extrapolate that out over the year, that makes it come out to about $482.62 is what it costs our town per open hour of operation for that library. When you compare that to Concord, that breaks down, they're open 65 hours a week, breaks down to about $466 per open hour of operation. And then the next most expensive budget is Salem. They're open 68 hours a week and their budget was, again, 1.4 million. That breaks down to about $398 per open hour of operation. And then it continues down the trend. You can see the trend here, if I hold this up. This is our library cost per open hour of operation. This is on the lower end of the scale. You can see that open hours of operation range from the lowest, Leninary, at 52 hours per week, and the highest, Salem, at 68 hours per week. So it just begs the question, for $1.3 million, I would think we should be able to be open more hours per week. I'm just throwing that out there as a, as a data point and I have this if anybody wants to see it.
I'd love to.
I can, I can pass it down. I have an extra copy here, but.
Send that out electronically. Yeah. Send that to us?
I can. And basically, I did this analysis a little deeper and I looked at it in terms of an average of this entire sample. So our population that our library serves is on average, given this statistical sample that I took, the average of the sample was a population of 27,480 people. That makes Leninary about 2,919 people more, below that average. Okay, so we're below the average on the population, but for $143,000 over the average of the sample and the average of the budget, when I take the average of all the sample, is about 1.157 million. Open average of open hours per week, what came in, about 60.4. So we're about 8.4 hours under what the average of the sample should be. The long and the short of it is, when you break it down at a cost per open hour of operation on average for this sample, it came out to be about $370 per hour.[1737.82] on average for this sample, it came out to be about $370 per hour. So, we're about $112 over what the average of this statistical sample is. When I look at, again, it's looking at the budget divided by the number of hours of open operation per year, which is based on 52 hours open a week. So, it just begs the question, why is it costing us so much for so little? It's a great library. I personally am very familiar with the Kelly Library. I'm familiar with the Nesmith Library. I'm not that familiar with some of these other libraries. They're all good libraries. They're excellent libraries. I have no problem personally with a $1.3 million budget for a library. My only argument is, I'd like to see it open more hours, given the statistics that I was able to attain. And it's all available information online, you know, when you look at the budgets of the various towns. I did similar breakdowns for the police, fire, DPW. Police, fire, DPW, and the short of it all is, we're doing very well, right in a sweet spot, statistically speaking, in terms of, if you wanted to parade it out in terms of a bell curve, we're doing very well in those departments. I would argue that we're doing extremely well cost-wise, when you break it down in a similar fashion, population, land area-wise that they got to cover, et cetera. We're doing great. In fact, I'd argue that our DPW is doing a phenomenal job, and they're under budget.
Oh, he's in the room.
But I know where that would come from.
Your road will get plowed first now. Get your address out there, junkies, write that down. Extra sanding for you!
Todd, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Have you done the math in reverse? I mean, if you took the number of hours libraries open times the average in the sample, the average cost per hour, could you back extrapolate as to what the budget would be in that case?
Well, I calculated that I think it should be open 67 hours a week.
I mean, if it stayed open.
He based it on 1.3 million.
If you took the number of hours it is open, times the average cost in your sample of.
Oh.
What the, to go backwards to see what the budget might be instead of 1.3.
Really, that's an easy calculation here, 52 hours.
I just sent you guys the library union contract, and it's, there's no hours of operation in it.
Okay, thank you. Should be, based on that, it should be about 1.0, actually, 1,00372, 32 cents.
About $300,000 less than it is being proposed at?
Roughly, yeah.
It's a data point.
I mean, it's just an average. I mean, you know, one could argue, well, some libraries may have better programs and so forth and so on, and I understand all that. But when you look at the numbers, it just, to me, it jumps out at me. We have the third highest budget out of the sample, but we have the fewest open hours of operation. It's that simple.
Can I just speak to that? I know that there's really a lot of utilization of this facility in our community, and I know there are a lot of people in this room who spend time over at Leach Library, either on their own or with their children. This is a very valid way of starting to analyze it, but we also have to ask ourselves what other programs are being brought forward to the children and the people of our community that may not exist in some of these other libraries. So, there are more subtle aspects of this that I hope that we take into consideration as we move forward. I have no problem with the question being asked, however, what are those benefits that might not be obvious from this analysis?
If we had a library rep here, we could ask that question.
I was thinking we might, actually.
Maybe next time.
Maybe next time. It's just a budget hearing.
It's just a data point I thought might be useful for the folks to.
It's a very good analysis, and good point, Lisa.
Very interesting.
Okay.
I'm going down through this first, and then we'll open it up, because we've got all these to touch on, so.
Is it appropriate?
Hey, Dave. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to clarify, kind of bring people all the way up to speed on this. If you recall, and I sent this, or at least I put it on the view of the computers for all the councils to look at, there were 38 items altogether that I identified as being more than default, and again, more than additions to the budget. You had asked staff, or you had spoken to the people within the departments if there were SDRs, or if they were items that, you know, were absolutely essential, non-essential, et cetera. So, once we whittled those down, we were talking about the 22 items. So, I'm wondering if there's any way that we can, I mean, it's things like additional personnel salaries, training benefits, special investigation services, custodial services, rental and lease services, public ed dues and subs, seminars and workshops, crime prevent supplies, civil defense expense, other miscellaneous expense, capital lease, and senior field home day, and furniture and fixtures. Just, it was a matter of, one of the questions that we had a few minutes ago was that, well, is this before or after those items were taken into consideration that were, kind of, that were already eliminated? Once you hit the default plus $300,000, there were already items that were eliminated from your manager's budget. So, I don't know if it's a good idea, I would ask, actually, if you could send that around to say, okay, here is, you know, where we're at as far as the town manager's budget, which one of those SDRs were eliminated? At least so that I can, I only talked about three that were, could possibly be funded, but it's also goes in reverse when we're, if we come up with a town only giving us the default, or $100,000 under default, it's still useful to kind of look at those items one by one? As, I think you've mentioned the IT computers as one example.
Sure, just generally, based upon my recommended allocation of the operating budget at the level of $300,000 above default. For example, we have identified $46,000 in operating line items in the fire department, which has been removed from my recommended budget. This level restores $28,000, those line items, of the $150,000 in additional police department overtime. It restores about $115,000 of that. So, I can give you that information, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it would be really, so, kind of to give us, stay on the same page, because I know what you're getting. You're getting a spreadsheet from me, a spreadsheet from Tom, John, probably everybody, you know, is sending you things. But if we can at least say, okay, here's what we're looking at.
Absolutely, sure.
That's okay to do legally, right? As long as you send it out, this is what Joe has, this is what Tom has, I mean, this is.
Yeah, just, talking about the legal thing, the only thing is, three councils can't engage in a conversation, but as far as communication, which one will keep back and forth, they're public documents, but they're certainly allowed by the law.
Yeah, what I didn't want, what I was being cautious to do is, I did put it on our shared drive, just so that we could look at during this time, and I deleted it, but I didn't send it out to all the councils. And I was wondering if, maybe that'd be a good idea, if you shared those bottom lines. This way, at least we're kind of at a starting point, because I just realized when Tom asked about the IT 17,000, well, we're all talking about the same thing, but in different conversations, you know? So.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
Couple of questions for Dave, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dave, if we go to default, are we still laying people off? No, we are not. We are not laying people off if we go to default? We are not. Okay. All right, so, what I'd be looking for here is, is I think that, we went into this budget process saying, we're going to tell the people of the town what it takes to actually run the town. I don't have to agree with the current budget, that's $300,000 over default. I don't think it will pass with the voters. But I do think if we can explain $200,000 over default, from the standpoint of shoring up things like overtime and gasoline, and, you know, what real costs of things are, I think that's, you know, a budget that can have a chance of passing. Anything beyond $200,000, I really think we're probably kidding ourselves. And, you know, what I would like to see is, is our best effort at $200,000 over plan, cutting whatever things we need to cut, but I think for our next meeting, we have to at least get down to $200,000 to have a real conversation. One point of view.
Dave, I was looking at the IT, we're at $341,595, that's proposed. What kind of flexibility is in that? What's contracted versus planned expenditures for the 2,000 budget?
The contract that we have is located within our management services. Those are all software contracts. We also have a contractual services line item with the company that we outsource at this point. Everything else, machinery, equipment, that sort of thing is, that's listed out by department, what department needs are. So, that's where that would need to be looked at, reevaluated.
Equipment goes into the departments, everything that's in IT is a fixed contractual cost.
I'm sorry, John, what?
Everything that's in the $341,000 is a fixed contractual cost?
Not everything. Nope, just the management services. Management services for $142,445.
Is contractual.
It's contractual, then.
That's contractual, and the contracted services for $119,350. Those two amounts are contractual.
So, about 260.
Okay.
Is contractual.
So, just to tie this in to what I was talking about earlier, Sean, what you're trying to do too, is you're looking at these line items and saying, okay, what's in there, and what's, you know, essential, and what? And so, what we did was, is that we went and said, okay, of that IT, it's so much over last year and so much over budget, and what was the number? So, when I went back to town manager, he said, well, these were, you know, that were SDR, staff, you know, reduction that could possibly be made. And to be even more specific, what that was, was $17,000, you know, $17,000 in IT computer replacements. So, again, I'm summarizing, I guess, and now we're going into more detail, so I apologize for summarizing a little bit too much earlier. But that spreadsheet will do that for us. It'll kind of identify, you know, after going through this big giant book, identify those areas that are, what was the word, essential versus non-essential, that, again, I'm trying to.
Identify. Do we have a leasing program for any of our IT equipment?
We lease our copy machines, our central copy machines. As far as our computers itself, we used to be under a leasing program, and we found that it was not cost beneficial to do that any longer.
With the great reduction in cost and everything, it probably isn't.
We can get computers.
It depreciates so fast.
Modernity.
Yeah, okay, just checking. Thank you.
Dave?
Yes.
With the suggested reductions I gave you, we get to defaults, I think, or close. But, and I know you don't want to talk about it till after, until the December 28th, but I think, for me, part of the discussion has to be about eliminating Article II and putting some sort of funds for Yano's repairs back in the budget, perhaps $200,000. But, so I don't know when you want, if you still want to wait till have that on the 28th, but, I mean, but that gets me at least to where John is, at the, you know, default plus 200.
I think what would be beneficial at the end of this meeting is for the council to arrive at some direction as to what number you want me to work on, and, number one, we said 200 as an example. Number two, what's your priorities with respect to that number? I've heard gasoline and replacement coverage and overtime. And number three, how is the council considering on Article Eight, which is fire department staffing? Because currently, we know we have a deficit in fire department overtime coverage, as an example. These numbers not include that, because that's in a separate article. If the council, if the council's preference is not to put that as a separate article, I've got to incorporate that in the priorities which the council is going to give me tonight. Once I, once I build that number, if you, there's really two choices with respect to Tom's proposal. So, if the council decides to not bond for road reconstruction this year, but actually to have a warrant article, but to include the tax impact in that, you're either going to add to the tax impact, or you're just going to reduce that number closer to default to accommodate those roads. Follow? So, essentially, if you give me a direction of develop a prioritized budget at default plus $200,000, and then you also tell me, raise $200,000 for roads, but have it within that $200,000 over default, then that's your over default number. See what I'm saying? So, those are the three. If that's the path we're going down. Yeah, if that's the path we're going down. Those are the four items I do need to be responsive to you for the 28th.
But one's a budget item, and one's a separate article, right? So, in other words, the budget is an article, right?
That's correct.
But one is one that the citizens of Lunenberry will decide on, and one is one that we'll offer as a consideration within.
Right, and there's two ways to handle that. One is you could say, we want an operating budget of default plus 200, and then we're also going to offer the citizen an opportunity to raise 200 in a separate article for roads. Or the direction may be that, in totality, we want a number equal to default over 200, which means I have to include that $200,000 in the tax impact. So, it depends upon how you guys want to do it. It's either way, it's a policy decision. Okay, so, Article Eight, we're going to take to the voters, because trying to take it as part of the budget is just probably futile. So, that's the 403. We're going to take that as a separate article, see if the citizens of Lunenberry want to add additional firefighters. That would be about $76,000 for additional replacement coverage, and then another $324,000 for four additional firefighters. It was 326, somewhere in that area.
Tom, I'm sorry.
Just, not a comment of endorsement or lack of endorsement, but just for long-term planning, if we bond the road reconstruction, the interest on the bond, the payment on the bond becomes part of the next year's default. If we pull the bond off the table and fund it all with cash, then that amount becomes part of next year's default. So, it's just, just to understand that there is a longer-term impact that next year's council will have to consider.
All right. Understood. John, back here.
If you did that, if the bond, would there be a bond payment next year in the default? Because wouldn't that technically be the first year? Or will it be the?
Yeah, the half-year interest payment would become part of the fault. However, when you look at your default budget for FY14, you look at contractual obligations, which the bond has won, so your budget would automatically be increased to make sure you can be able to pay for that entire principal interest for FY14. It's the same thing as labor contract. If you can negotiate a 2% raise, you put that in next year's budget as an add-on, as directed by state law.
Anybody in the public would like to speak to Article Four, the general operating budget?
Everyone's racing after the mic. Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. Aren't you glad we spent 90 minutes on the smaller number? Just for clarification, Mr. Chair, can I ask the town manager a question?
Sure.
Yeah, just for clarification, because I think it does get missed by some folks. When the conversation is around 300 over default, 200 over default, at default, under default, we're talking specifically about one article, the operating budget.
That's correct.
That one article drives a portion, a large portion of the tax rate. However, that's not the only thing that drives the tax rate.
That's correct.
Right. So, the tax rate, so whether we, whether the council agrees on a number and comes forward, that default number is separate and distinct from the tax impact that capital reserves and maintenance trusts will have, special warrant articles will have, and the overlay and veterans will have.
Right.
So, a taxpayer's tax bill will be in part determined by the default, the budget that's determined here, but there'll be more than that going into the tax rate and tax bill.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So, speaking about just this article, and it kind of referenced the comments that I made before to you folks, and also at the Budget Committee, as one taxpayer, and I'm speaking just for myself, I am interested in less government in the form of just kind of focusing on essential services. Councilor Farrell mentioned, you know, what we need to run the town. While we can kind of debate what that means, I think what's implied is, what's essential to operate the town? So, when you look at the operating budget, it does appear that there are five, three departments that are essential to what I think local government should do, which is, you know, provide safety to its citizens in the form of our police budget and fire budget, and also the roads, which is the public works budget. That's $16,407. And then there's solid waste and debt service, which I think kind of roll off the table for discussion relative to this article, and that's another 4.8 million. So, that's $21,213 that's kind of already put on the side as essential operating the town. And then there's other things. One of the reasons that I'm interested in a budget that's at or below default is, I think of the 5.485 million that's left, I think there are ways to come up with that $300,000 that you're looking at right now, or even more. And I would request that the council consider, you know, looking at things such as the charitable contributions. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, I personally believe that charity is a private matter. It's something that individuals choose to do on their own behalf or their family's behalf, and they choose it in a variety. behalf, and they choose it in a variety of ways, shapes, and forms. I'm not comfortable with the town providing a charitable contribution on behalf of everyone by using our money. So I think you've got 70,000 in that, in that line item. I think it rolls up under general government or Dave's budget, I'm not sure where, but, you know, I'd prefer that the council kind of entertain that as one area that be reviewed as, you know, whether that's needed to kind of run the town. I don't think it is. So I think there's some play there to help us get down to default or below. The library budget's been mentioned before, that is the next highest number. There's a lot of folks who are passionate about the library, they feel that it is essential. I believe it, it provides a service that's, that's valuable to folks, but I don't think it kind of fits that, what we need to run the town with. So I think there's some room there to help us get to default or below. One of the articles, which is the Route 102 corridor study, which is number nine, which I know we'll discuss later, I think that's something else that can be considered. And, and anything else within the operating budget that, that can be looked at as to whether it fits that model of, is this something that's essential to running the town? So as one citizen, I'm hoping that the, the council kind of consider looking at those areas, and, you know, get us to default or below. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else on Article Four?
Martin Trugus, 17 Wimbledon Drive. Just a quick statement under solid waste. In talking with the town engineer, Bob Carey, I think it is, I asked him if we increase the recycling rate from 21% up to 40%, which I know is awfully high, we could save 165,000 in tipping fees. And this is something, again, we're going to have to look toward the future, as we have other areas in town developing, especially around Woodmont Commons and some more homes coming into town. We need to look at that part of it, because it's going to be increasing costs in the future, especially as Rochester becomes full. You know, the question will come up, where do we put the stuff? So there's something that the townspeople can do something about, that if they can just double their recycling rate from what they're doing now, they could help to, you know, reduce the budget by that, that amount. It's not a huge amount compared to all the other stuff, but at least it's a, it's a, it's a good-sized stone in the, in the pond.
On your point, I think that's great. Every little bit counts, you know, the data points that we were talking about earlier, you know, almost 200,000 just by looking at the details, so.
I think one of the options, Marty, that the solid waste committee, I think, has considered is, that we haven't embraced in town, is mandatory recycling. Would you be in favor of that?
As long as I don't get all the email. But yeah, it may be, a lot of towns do that.
But it's, it's optional, as you know, in our community.
Moving on to Article Five, capital reserve funds. No, 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 no. That's fine. If they have questions, they can put their hands up. Capital reserve funds. Dave, why don't you give us a little bit on that?
Yeah, just for clarification, this appropriation allows the town to set aside funds for the systematic replacement of our fire and highway equipment, including heavy equipment, fire trucks, ambulances. What we used to do is try to put X number of dollars in each fund every year, you know, with the, it wasn't a top priority to see which, which purchases were coming up in the near future, which are coming up in the, in the long term. So there's two different changes this year. As one, we had, we had some project funds lap the surplus, undesigned fund balance of, well, 360,000. What we'd like to do is reappropriate that back in the capital reserve funds, to get us, start to get us caught up. And also is that, instead of having a level amount into each fund or slightly increasing, we'll specifically target each year's appropriation to specific funds based upon the timing of replacement of that equipment. For example, we've got a majority of this, of the proposed expense of FY13, empty the fire department apparatus fund, because we're looking at replacing a number of fire trucks in the, in the next couple, couple of years. And so we're looking at, you know, each truck's a run year about 400, $450,000, so we're trying to beef up that fund. But, but the, the bottom line is, we'll go back and look at our records, but the bottom line is, I believe that the, the tax impact for Article Five is, is suggested be increased by 35,000 over what it currently is in FY12. So the gross number's a large number, the net to be raised is an increase of about 35,000.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions from the council, the Budget Committee?
Dave, actually, one question. How did you come up with your breakdown of what you took out of fund balance versus your tax rate?
Well, what we've tried to do is try to maintain somewhat of a level impact on the tax rate, and as we discussed previously, we're going to have to increase, from our perspective, the investment in tax dollars to the funds. So what we've tried to do is have, use the net to be raised by taxes as the basis, and just ratchet it up slowly, and then we look at, see frankly, what's available as far as undesigned fund balance. And if, and if we run into a year like we have this year, we did about five years ago, where we had some excess undesigned fund balance, we essentially recommend that we make a balloon payment to those funds to help us get caught up.
Okay. Thank you. Any members of the public, questions on the capital reserve fund, Article Five?
Did we finish Article Four?
Yes, we did. I did. I do know how to do it, so I don't have to learn. But if you'd like to question it, step right up. You can still go back to it, Reed. There's nothing prohibiting you from doing that. Come on up.
Reed Clark, Stone End Road. I like that going once, going twice, done. So we can.
It's not done, it's a budget hearing, Reed, so if you have a question, you can step up. We're not going to stop you from talking.
Okay, well, believe me, I had 16 calls, and 13 of which were about the town, only three from the majority of what we pay for, um, school. The 13 about the town dealt mostly, almost entirely with, with the exception of one, with the highway, the fire, and the police. None of them lowered, lowered the amount of money, what they wanted. Some of them, two of them wanted to know if the fire department, I believe, Mr. Captain Rogers said that four, that were, four firefighters were needed on each shift, and there was only three on each shift. And if he had gotten that from some handbook, why didn't we have four as a matter of being part of a well-regulated town? Same with the police. I did not hear Chief Hart's presentation on the police, but I think they were, they are at a lower capacity too. And this man, these two people wanted to know why we weren't at least on an even keel. The others, none of them, incidentally, could figure out how to get the money for it, so that, that's your problem, but I mean. They all wanted to be even. Most of them, in fact, all of them, except one, wanted to say that it was necessary to run the town, both for the disenfranchised, in other words, the people without a job, and for the people with a fixed income, and for the people who may, or maybe affluent or maybe just making it. The town is, for safety purposes, the same for everybody. So it's up to you to figure out whether, well, it's up to the voters, I guess, figure out whether one should be at a level, the fire department and police department, and whether the bumps in the roads in the highway should be fixed. Two of them were very argumentative that we are just once in a while getting enough money to fix the roads, like last year. And, because there's a lot of safety issues concerning the roads. And the one, the one person wanted to know very clearly whether the council, and, I don't know how to put this, I'm supposed to be the diplomat, whether the council considered lack of a job, affluence, or just making it, or fixed income, as being different from, from the sake of view of safety of the town. And I said, well, you know, that you ask the person in each category that question, and you'll get a different answer. And, I mean, the human beings in that category, but you all have to make a decision as to whether there is a difference somehow. And if they don't give their names, and you don't recognize their voices, it's very strange when people get mad and you can't tell who they are, so you should, you know, at least sit down with them somewhere. But, six, only 16, that's the lowest I've had in 14 years, lowest number of people called me. So, and incidentally, under what, Dave, under what general government possibly, or, no, general assistance, I'm sure it's not, but under what does old home day come?
General government.
Okay.
Thank you, Reed. Okay, going back to Article Five, were there any questions on the capital reserve? Okay. Moving on to Article Six. Dave, why don't you give us a little heads up on what that is?
Sure, this is a proposal for a new capital reserve fund for fire department equipment. I've asked, it's going to be Captain Carterwell, who give you an idea of the type of equipment. You may recall, a couple of years ago, we had a warrant article in which we, the department was successful in receiving a grant, I think for about 240,000 for.
252, yeah.
For breathing apparatus, and our cost was 10%, local, which is great, but we can't always rely upon grant funds, so they've developed a program, and Doug will take you through just the types of equipment we propose that would be purchased under this, under this program.
This is the type of equipment that's been cut out in the last couple of years due to budget constraints. Defibrillators, cots, IV pumps, that type of medical equipment, durable medical equipment we use, they've just gone to the roof in recent years. A defibrillator's a little over 30,000. So we broke it down, emergency medical equipment, the next group is fire equipment, fire hose, thermal imagers, protective clothing, a set of, full set of fire hose for fire trucks, a little over 15 grand with nozzles. And we look at all this equipment, it'll be about 10 years. The next group is communications. We've been lucky, along with the SCBA grant, we've had a lot of communication grants in the last couple of years, but the equipment only lasts 10 years. So we're looking at a, a plan, 150,000 a year, to try to continue with this before we end up where too much stuff is broken and we can't afford it, so.
Any questions for Doug?
No, I mean, we've been talking about this for years on the CIP and everything, they, they can't run the place without the stuff.
Any more questions? All right. Thanks, Doug. Any questions from the public in regards to Article Six? All right. Article Eight, fire department staffing. Dave, you want to just?
Yeah, this is a separate warrant article, which was requested by the council to look at the, the cost impact of increasing our coverage level to 11 emergency responders in the fire department per shift. There's really, there's two components to this. First is all, is that we, we do not actively fund replacement coverage for the fire department, so of that 403,000, 76,000 is to, is for additional overtime or replacement costs to bring us up to 10, and 327,000 is the cost to add four additional fire personnel. And as the council had a discussion at the last meeting, how that expended is depending upon what the, what the policy is. If we look, if, if we try to establish as a policy 11 employees per shift, then we may look at additional overtime, because obviously you've got more people that are, that are working, you have more chef, more shifts to fill. If you're looking at striving for 11 but maintaining 10, that softens that a little bit. Just a word about the 76,000 expenditure for overtime. The chief and his staff developed a historical review of, of, over the last three years, as to how much we incurred for overtime for vacation, sick, undue injury, off-due injury. And so they, they took the average of those. If we took the highest of each of those years, three years in each category, that number would be a good deal more than 76,000, but I took the average of those. So again, it's, obviously, we can't guarantee there'll be 10 people on shift, but we'll be, we'll be meeting that goal a lot more frequently than we currently are.
I have a question on that. So am I right to assume, from what you've just said, that, that 76,000 is not inclusive of the budgeted overtime that I alluded to earlier of 174,578?
That's correct.
So it's, it's roughly 240 grand in overtime.
Yeah, just for clarification, Joe, what 174 number are you looking at?
Forty, 140, overtime salaries for all departments. So what I did is I looked at it for all departments first, then went into the detail of each department.
Okay.
But this was a high-level, 174, 578, which was what you added into the 2012 default budget.
Right. If you're looking at what's in default in total, it does not include this number here. That's correct.
Okay.
This is in addition to that number.
Okay. Any other questions from the Budget Committee or the council?
I just wondered, does this bring us up to the national minimum standards for fire safety for the number of personnel on a shift? Are we close to that yet?
Did you hear me punt?
Got it. Nope. 13 or 14, is that correct?
Yeah, a few of our previous conversations was about 15 to 16 responders, including incident commander, are the national standards for us to operate on scene. So this does not bring us to that total.
All right, but let's ask a little bit further clarifying question. NFPA looks for four on an engine, right?
Yeah, they look at four or more, correct.
Okay, so we run three, three, and two right now, right?
Yeah, minimum staffing of nine, we run two on every truck.
So what we'd be able to do is we would, so with, with 10 hoping for 11, what's the staffing look like?
It'd be three on two of the engines, and then two people on the other two.
Okay.
So we're getting closer.
And, and this would also allow you to take out more equipment, obviously, if you have more staff to.
Adding one person, or the, the backfill of overtime, is if I'm out sick today, there's somebody to fill my slot. It doesn't add another vehicle.
Oh, okay, okay.
The, the other thing is, that standard.
The other thing is, that standard is only firefighters, it does not include EMT ambulance, right?
Well, all of our employees are cross-trained dual-rolled. They all work on the ambulances, they all work on the engines. So it looks at total responders to an incident, not whether they're trained as EMS or firefighters.
No, no, I'm saying the standard. Is that firefighters, for firefighters, standard?
That is for firefighters.
I think what I'm trying to have the public understand is that it's not just firefighters there, it's an ambulance service as well.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So it's a dual role. When you're talking about 14 or 15, you're talking about these guys that are nationally just firefighters. I mean, and I understand they may have some other certifications, but we man those fire departments and have ambulance as well, ready to roll.
Correct.
So that's another data point to make sure that you realize.
Correct.
Yeah, so when we send someone on the scene, they have, you know, the ability to take over emergency until the ambulance gets there. You have someone with a skill set that can be helpful.
Absolutely.
So Doug, what does it take to put two ambulances on the road? How many people?
To add another ambulance?
Yes.
Would be another two additional people per shift, so-
Okay, so we would have to go from 10, 11 wishful to 13.
Correct.
You know, and as I said, pointed out earlier, too, I think this is probably, when we first got our books, there may be some opportunity in revenue sourcing, some of the, if we did do that. I understand that Londonderry would pay for the retirement over the long run, so that's something we have to really weigh out. But there's also revenue if we could get ambulance services from other towns, similarly to what we're looking at with dispatch. You know, so that's another way of paying for it. And it would provide Londonderry with a better, not better service, but more service. So-
More options to help defer some of the costs. Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council, the Budget Committee?
Yeah, I just have one comment that may help people understand comparatively how Londonderry Fire Department compares to other surrounding communities like Salem, Wyndham, Derry, Concord, Bedford, and Merrimack. I looked at it in terms of population, and I looked at it in terms of square miles that they have to cover. Londonderry has to cover, I mean, the Londonderry Fire Department has to cover 41.9 square miles compared to an average of the sample of 38 square miles. When I broke down the cost per square mile across, because that's just the way I looked at it, taking the budget divided by the square miles, I mean, Londonderry, the average of the sample was $188,828 per square mile. Londonderry's cost is $142,456 in terms of cost per square mile. That's just another way to look at it. Cost per person, the average of my sample was about $247 per person on a population of 24,129. In fact, that is the average. So we are right at the average of the sample, and we're well below the average on a cost per square mile basis, so just another data point.
The other thing, don't forget that we also have an airport.
That's correct.
So that was, you know, we also talked about some items that are different, and that is one of them that gives an additional challenge to you guys, as well as the police, as far as when you're looking at miles to mile, there's going to be, you know, if there's an airport involved there, you know, it's also that much more difficult, or that many more instances that could, a call could be needed for ambulance service or firefighter or police.
It's a large area to cover. I think they're very cost-effective in what they've done so far, so that's what these data indicate.
So when we visited the Derry Dispatch Center, Doug and I were there with everyone else, and we'll get into which town it was, but somebody had, there was a call, and it was a hard problem. And they needed to send contract ambulance. And it was seven or eight minutes before they found the ambulance, seven or eight minutes before they found the ambulance, before they could dispatch him. And what's our average time, Darren?
Four minutes for kind of call to respond.
Just sort of an interesting data point.
Get some clarity on that, that's four minutes till you're on scene. That's right. That's not till we find our ambulance. That's four minutes to our on scene.
From the time we receive for the call to the time we're on scene.
Right, well, my point is that they didn't find the ambulance for seven or eight minutes.
So if you can throw a few of the things that we talked about, everybody's been talking about, even when we talk about cable access, we talked about essential versus non-essential. Now, is that essential or not essential to be eight minutes or four minutes if you have a heart attack?
No, 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 eight minutes until, that means they didn't get there for like 15-
I'm just saying, I mean-
Top 54, where are you?
You know, you're like, okay, well, you know, we want to keep the tax rate down, and everybody doesn't want to spend more money, but you're getting a very, very high level of service that could possibly save your life versus, you know, sending it out for eight, nine, 10, 11, 12-minute response. So you just got to really, I mean, it's been an eye-opening experience for me to really dig into it and to realize, and I wish more people would come and go forward and kind of visit you guys and just see what you guys do. It's been really eye-opening to see how much service we actually get. And so that data point that Mr. Jankas threw out there is extremely valuable, and it says a lot.
One of the things to consider on your data is, most of the communities that surround us run three-man companies. So they have three personnel on every engine company we're running to, so that's probably the cost difference.
It's amazing you're able to cover what you do cover, given the manpower you have.
Well, I had a, three nights ago, I had a motor vehicle accident on West Road. That motor vehicle accident required everyone in my companies in town. So we had to set up a landing zone for the helicopter, so I had to call in Litchfield to set that up for us, incorporate the police department to assist in that, but just one motor vehicle accident with one patient took my nine guys.
And we also, you also have to deal with 93 coming right up through the middle of town, so-
93, and just the demographics of the town. I mean, we have a lot of industry up at the north end, you know. We get low-grade and confined space rescue, you know, training with them up there all the time, that, you know, I think benefits the whole community as a whole, just for the personnel that we have trained, you know?
Well, I don't think there's any doubt, Darren, that you guys do an awful lot with less than you have for years, you know? I think what it comes down to is, for a long time, we've tried to do less with more, or more with less. And I think we've gotten to the point where we need to start looking outside of that and looking towards, you know, what the future is, you know? Not to mention, we also have a growing older demographic in town, which is something also that hasn't been mentioned at all. And, you know, I know, but when we're older, things seem to be falling apart a little bit more, so, you know. I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to make is we have certainly, and this is my third year in the council, third budget, you know, we're looking at increases in the fire department equipment and putting it into a reserve account, which is new. We're looking at possibly doing that with the paving. We're looking at doing that possibly with, you know, we basically need to look for funding mechanisms. And the funding mechanisms that we're looking at are going to be, as you saw earlier, we spent 90 minutes, as Mike Brown pointed out, on talking about cable studio money, which isn't really the cable studios money, but we can argue that till we're blue in the face, and we're not going to, they're not going to hear me, you know, I can listen till I'm blue in the face, and we're going to have a different opinion on it, and that's just how it is. But the bottom line is, we have these real expenses that are in front of us, and we need to find a way to help fund them, to help lessen the burden on the taxpayers. And, you know, we need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, these are all people that are going to feel these increases, including myself. I mean, in front of us tonight, we have the land use change tax that Council Frida is going to be talking about. There's also a resident that is going to be bringing forth their own ideas of trying to get some of that money to help fund some of the costs of what we got going on here. I can tell you right now that, as I'm already in public saying, I'm on board with the wants and needs right now as far as the library goes. I know it's a valuable service, but, you know, I know what the needs are, and when you weigh it, I'm going with the needs, and that's just how it is. And I know that's going to be unpopular with some people, but that's just how it is. I'm sorry, but it's just like at home right now. My wife's unemployed, so there's a lot of things suffering right now, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Before we get off the fire-
Sure.
As we're going through this process the past two years, I'm, Londonderry is going through what every other community in New Hampshire and in our country is going through. Is it within the realm of possibility that as town officials, you could approach our delegation in Congress and point out to them that we have very worthwhile needs at the community level? And we're struggling to fund even the most minimal improvements in our basic safety services in town? Is it something that the town council could do to plead our case? We're certainly not the only ones who have that problem. And it may be that our voices haven't been quite loud enough. My first year on the Budget Committee and on the CIP, the first question everyone asks is, "Oh, what are the grant monies available?" Well, you know what? Those questions aren't even coming up anymore because we've all kind of lost hope. And I don't think we should lose hope, and I, but I think we have to prosecute our own case in this instance. How do you feel about that?
It's a legitimate question.
I think we file for every grant we can possibly file for.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, we got one to build North Station.
Yep.
Which we were very lucky to have.
I can tell you, as part of the economic development group, we approached our congressional delegation on Pettingville Road multiple times. The most recent conversation I had with Kelly Ayer started off with, "John, don't ask me for any money, I'm not doing any earmarks."
So now he's going after Mr. Ginta.
You know, well, that's, so we're going to ask somebody else.
Yes.
So I think we've done a good job of approaching our congressional delegation, but more or less, what we've been getting is, is we don't have any money either.
Yeah.
So-
And you see the struggle right now in Washington, they're all still fighting over it.
Absolutely.
Now the Republicans are going after the Democrats for, you know, passing this two-month appeasement thing so they can go, you know, it's a constant battle.
So the answer is, we continue to approach them. I mean, that's been part of the means that we've done it. So I hear you.
And I guess, I guess what we did as a council is, we basically said, "All right, we agree with the fire department, we know that there's a shortfall on staffing, and, you know, now we're at least letting it go before the voters, and the voters are going to say, 'Well, what do you find acceptable? What do you want to do?'" Instead of us just saying, "Okay, we're going to do it," because that's not the will of the people as far as that's concerned, and let's just see what people want to pay for.
But it's also not, you know, it's not the end of the world here. We're not, you know, going down to Home Depot and boarding up the library and the cable division, you know?
Right.
We're talking about, you know, some possible reductions to the library out of a $1.3 million budget. We're talking about the cable division putting over $104,000 to the town budget.
They have possible land change tax.
Right. You know, so it's not all doom and gloom. It's difficult, it requires people to make a tough decision, you know? If you didn't want to do the tough decision, you could have stayed home and watched from the other side of the, you know, the viewing screen. But at the end of the day, all we're doing is making a recommendation. It's people who are going to say, "Yes, you can have four firefighters, I'll pay the cost," or, "No, you won't." You know, they want to make that decision, fine. I think it's frankly foolish, and I understand everybody's heard, and I understand it from my work, you know? I've been at a bankruptcy court, I've seen foreclosures, you know?
All the time.
It's not a pretty sight, so.
Yeah, but you're doing better, there's more criminals.
So, but I think we all have to, you know, buckle down and make a tough decision and see what's the future. Maybe not to this year it's going to be difficult, but two years or three years from now, if we break off, you know, I would suggest, you know, and I know Yanos is going to yell at me back there, but, you know, we have to break off the cycle of borrowing to pay for repairs. It's, you know, we're paying a dollar twenty for a dollar's worth of work or benefit, you know? That just hurts us going down the line. And with all due respect, I know there's lots of holes in the streets and there's lots of problems in there, but, you know, we're not running on dirt roads, this isn't the old west here, you know? So do what we can in my-
But I do think that we have to consider that at a certain point, excuse me for interrupting you, that at a certain point, it's, we are going to meet that point of diminishing returns. You can only disinvest for so many years in your own future and your children's education before their consequences are going to be serious. And so, just like your home budget, you're going to start looking for sources of revenue. It's not, you can't cut your way out of a recession, and we can't cut ourselves, cut our way out of these problems, so I think that's-
Can't borrow your way to process.
Yeah, I was going to say, you can't borrow because of-
Come on, they say you can.
No, it's not about, it isn't about borrowing, but it is certainly about bringing in additional revenue, so if we could keep our eye on both sides, I think.
Mr. Don.
So hey, guys, so we'll see at the polls, you guys are going to put together a presentation, it'll be out front, educating everybody on Article 8.
Sure.
I appreciate-
It would be huge for you, probably, to do that.
I appreciate you guys recognizing what we've been doing with the staff that we have.
Well, I mean, we know it's not easy, I mean, we see it. It's, seen it for years, but it's up to the voters to, you know, make the decision. So like Counsel Farrell said, it would be a great idea if you could do that. I mean, Yanos does it, and I'm sure he'll be out there again.
And you understand why we're doing it this way, because if we put it in the budget and it goes up against default, we might as well, we all might as well just stay home.
Yeah.
Counsel Don. I have a couple of general comments about the budget. Just to put in perspective, I think it was John that asked for the data, just came across our desk here, in terms of the 10-year perspective as to what our headcount situation has been for the past 10 years. And just so people understand, that over the past 10 years, we reduced, on the town headcount, town side, we reduced full-time employees by three, we've reduced part-time employees by two, and we've reduced six full-time employees to six part-time employees. So that's a, and that's from 2001 to 2011. That's a pretty significant reduction amid the increase in demand for services, if we went back and looked at, especially in the public safety side, the number of police calls, the number of responses by the fire department, it's probably more than doubled in that period of time. So it's just a, it's a data point, it's a point of perspective. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, that was brought up by a citizen was to look at, by Mike Brown, to look at the charitable line item. We don't really call it the charitable line item, but-
Thanks, guys.
I think, Dave, if I remember right, historically, we used to have a public welfare department. And so people understand, that's not a discretionary item, that's, we do have statutory requirement that's imposed upon us by the state to provide public welfare. And we found a few years ago that it was more efficient and more economical to outsource that to an agency rather than to staff it internally, and as part of the headcount reduction. So some amount of that money is a trade-off, is a business trade, if you will, between the cost of internal staffing versus the cost of outsourcing. So first, so it's a two-part question. One is, how much of that line item do we need to retain in order to keep that level of service? And then secondly, whatever the balance is, I would like to ask the council if we'd be willing to charge the Budget Committee to look at that and come back. We've historically asked the Budget Committee to make recommendations to the council on that line item, and it's usually done every couple of years, so I think we're off cycle? Are we off a year now?
I don't think we are. The Budget Committee's looked at it every other year.
Right, so I would recommend that whatever that non-welfare piece of that amount is, that we ask the Budget Committee to come back and make a recommendation to the council, perhaps at the next public hearing on the 12th, to what they, what their input would be with the thought, considering the suggestion made by the citizen that we reduce, or I think his language was that we get out of that business, but, you know, what's, given that recommendation, what's the Budget Committee recommend to the council?
Yeah, that portion of the general assistance budget is $63,336, and it funds 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12 agencies in the area which either provide direct or indirect support to citizens, and a lot of those would otherwise end up in our general assistance office, which we, like you said, we outsourced it, and now we contract with Community Health Services, who has the ability to leverage our funds, other dollars.
So considering there is a trade, there is a business trade there, perhaps you could advise the Budget Committee what that trade looks like, and how much of that account is really at play? at play.
Sure.
Versus crossing the line and then having a corresponding increase in the trade with internal staffing. And then ask the Budget Committee to maybe make some value judgments as to, with the remaining amount of money, what do they recommend? That we spend it on? Do we cut it? Do we reduce it by a certain percentage? And I would, but I would ask the council if they would go along with that recommendation.
I've got no problem with that. Does the Budget Committee have time to do that between now and the meeting?
Between now and the 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's so little in it. I can't imagine they're gonna spend a lot of time on it. You're looking at $12,000 for family mediation through Upper Room. You're looking at what equates to $26,000 for oil assistance, which would otherwise weigh up in our welfare office. There's home hospice money, Meals on Wheels. We're looking at, we slashed that thing pretty tight over the last few years. It's a total of, I think we slashed it down to $63,000.
I remember my first year in the Budget Committee. I think we were about $115,000 back then.
Yeah, we.
Years ago.
And they all came in and they all presented their arguments.
Presented their thing, yeah.
And last year, I think we dropped it, if I'm not wrong.
It was '84, it went down.
It was $35,000 for one agency alone, but didn't even come in and request. And what else did we? Well, we'll look back and get the details. But last year was a big step down as well. And again, you know, the pressure of being concerned for the families in need, but having to balance that with available resources.
You may come back and say there's no room there.
Yeah.
But it was put on the table, and I think it's, you know, worth poking at.
It's gonna be a long year.
I'm one guy, so I think you have to poll the council.
I'm fine with it.
Fine, take a look at it.
The Budget Committee can do it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody from the public have any comments? No, sorry, John.
Can we just ask for some direction on what you're tasking us with? I think Mr. Brown proposed you get out of business altogether. He's put a proposal out there. And what is the task? Is it on that question? Is it everything is still in play and we're asked to review the propriety, let me just finish, the propriety of the amount? I mean, having some parameters, especially with the limited timetable, I think would be helpful to the committee.
Here's what I was thinking, is that get input from the town manager as to what the trade is. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me to cut that money out and then have, for statutory reason, have to go and add a full-time employee to the staff. I mean, that wouldn't make sense. So the question is, how much of that budget needs to be there to satisfy our statutory requirements? And then what's left over, I would say, is in play. And, you know, and you guys can recommend leave it alone, increase it, decrease it, or spread it differently.
Just speaking historically, there's gonna be some speculation in that, because I know when we had presentations last year, you had somebody like from the Upper Room or, you know, they couldn't necessarily allocate how many of those people were Lunandary versus Derry or surrounding communities. So some of this stuff is gonna be guesswork. Others are gonna be direct, fuel assistance or something like that. You can target the numbers of people in Lunandary. So there's gonna be a lot of gray area in this. You know, it'd be helpful, I think, for us just to know what you want us to do.
Actually, if I may respond, John, this is the list that we went over last year. We should be able, quickly be able to go through this real quick and just.
No, I remember the list from last year. I'm just saying that I remember some of the testimony. And while some could say how many people in Lunandary they were servicing, and we had a lot of discussions about that, others could not. So if those are off the table, you know, we're gonna have a quicker work of it. If it's going through all those and discussing what was said last year, that's gonna take a little bit longer.
I think, I think we could go through this rather efficiently. And it's, I think you'll realize what I'm talking about when we get together. We can have that separate, have a quick discussion on it, I'm sure.
I trust you.
All right. Bring it back out to the public for the Article Eight Fire Department's staffing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually am in favor of this article. I think it maps directly to kind of the core mission of government, and that's the essential services model. The reason I brought up the charitable thing was, I was hoping the council, not so much the Budget Committee, but that's your purview, that the council will consider revisiting areas that don't map to that essential services model and try to get the operating budget down to a default level. I think when you've got this kind of article out there and a budget article that's above default, I think it makes it more difficult than it needs to be for the taxpayer. So again, I think this article fits what we're looking to do from the standpoint of local government and look at other areas that aren't really necessary to fund at the level that they're being currently funding. And I offered that up as one area. Okay? You've talked about the cable at length. I think that's an opportunity that should be pursued. The library budget is an opportunity that should be pursued. And any other line item outside of the essential services, if there's room to bring the default, bring the budget down by that $300,000 to default, and that's presented to the taxpayers, I think Article Eight and anything else that's considered essential is more palatable to the taxpayer. So that's what my intent was, was to try to steer the council toward areas that really aren't needed to run the town day to day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, any other residents? Article nine, Route 102 corridor study, cap reserve. Dave?
This is another new proposal for the council and Budget Committee's consideration to start a non-cap reserve for the Route 102 corridor study. And I'll ask Andre to briefly explain the justification for the investment we're asking the town to make.
I'm not sure that we nearly need another presentation. Is this gonna be quick, Andre?
Yes.
Okay.
Get right to the point. Have at it. Back in 1994, town adopted a impact fee system, which included fire, police, parks and records, and school. Subsequently, they adopted a traffic impact fee that included Route 102 and Route 28. They employed Southern Hampshire Planning Commission to put together reports and the methodology to come up with a figure to assess traffic impacts on these corridors. The last, the last update to the Route 102 corridor plan was done in 2004. And so by the time this gets funded, it'll be about eight years since this corridor was studied and updated. And so we had put money in CIP, I think a couple of years ago, that was unfunded. But this year, I think we initially requested $140,000 for the whole corridor from the Derry Town Line to the Hudson Town Line along Route 102. But we narrowed that scope down to just the central corridor, because that's where we want to focus, because that's where most, majority of the impact's gonna take place in the near future. And then with the possibility that if the, obviously, the cost of the service goes down, that maybe we can get a little bit more. But down to $75,000, it was to update that 2004 plan.
Andre, how long, if this is funded, how long after July 1 of next year will this thing be completed?
It shouldn't take too long. I would venture to guess between 60, be 30, and actually, between 60 and 90 days, it should be able to be studied with a recommendation to the planning board be made with regard to the impact fee. The only thing, the only thing I hesitate on is that I do want, we'll be moving forward with the master plan update. And if the transportation section of that master plan update is to the degree where we can utilize some of the money, not the money, but some of the information with regard to, as to the direction the community wants to go with regard to its roadway infrastructure, that I want to definitely have that information available, integrated into that recommendation to the planning board.
Will any of this be made, this study be made irrelevant with what goes on at Woodmont?
No. Matter of fact, it should take into consideration what the potential would be over there.
Thanks.
When you say it should, will that be part of the RFP or part of what you specify to the person doing the study?
Yes, because the last update that's Southern Hampshire Planning Commission did identified lots of land along Route 102 or close to Route 102 that had a potential of development. And I believe the area that we're talking about had a, at the time, based on the current zoning, had a redevelopment of residential uses. Now that that has expanded based on the zoning, and the zoning is gonna be taken a look at throughout the corridor and see what the potential, potential development potential is for those lots will be taken into consideration.
The usage as it is right now is very heavy and kind of challenging, that road as it is. And with the onset of a giant project like this, I'm sure it's gonna have an even bigger impact.
Yeah. And also too, by the time we, obviously, January, July 1 rolls around, who knows where we'll be at with regard to this project. And therefore, if there's information that we can be, can be utilized for this project, obviously, we're gonna utilize it to get as close as we can as far as the projections are concerned.
But are we duplicating the efforts that the applicant's gonna have to do for studies, traffic studies on Woodmont?
Not necessarily, because they're gonna be doing mostly the traffic assessment for their property. Where the corridor study is gonna be taken a look at is all the properties that has the potential for redevelopment or development along Route 102 and their impact on the corridor.
One thing I.
All right, done here. It's a three-part question. Number one, is most of that 75 going to consultants? Number two, can any, if that's the case, can any of that be done internally with engineers we have on town staff? And number three, wouldn't the applicants for the other properties in the future be, like Woodmont, have to do their own studies for a traffic impact at that time? So are we kind of looking at things that the other applicants will have to address and do quick?
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, I throw so many.
Yeah. Your first question was?
Was, I assume 75 is for outside consultants to come in and do that study?
Correct.
And can any of that work though? We got a bunch of bright people on staff, engineering degrees and yourself, that can do that without outsourcing it?
I agree with you that we have a very bright staff here. But the disciplines that are needed is.
I thought you might.
That was probably the best tongue-in-cheek moment of the night.
Swing away at that.
But, you know, the discipline that we'll need on that, we're hiring a traffic consultant, a traffic engineer. That is not my main discipline, and nor is it the main discipline of our engineering staff here. So we need that discipline to the table.
Are there any other disciplines that come into that study other than traffic that we can save some money on?
Matter of fact, we have, matter of fact, when our, when a traffic consultant sits down to evaluate this project, they're gonna be sitting with staff to look and evaluate what are the development potential, what is happening in the community, to get as much information from us to help them do their job as to analyzing the present traffic as well, to project the future traffic, and what those, what that present and future traffic has on the, on the corridors.
Just a logistical question. I mean, I think it goes back to what was asked over here. How do we even know what that is with Woodmont still being kind of in a state of flux? I mean, we're talking about what could be big variances in those numbers.
Well, it gets to your point when you said, you know, aren't the developers gonna be submitting traffic plans anyways? What we're gonna be doing is basically estimating what the potential may be out there based on our zoning. And usually, we do that on the highest and best use. We just did that in the Route 28 corridor. And then, and based on that, as new development comes in, we're gonna measure what they, what their impact is against what we project. Most of the time, we're pretty spot on, but sometimes there's a variance, and therefore, that variance is taken into consideration based on actual data and the assessment's based on that actual data.
This is a dumb question, but at the end of the day, what's this study gonna answer or tell us, and how's it gonna change where we're going?
Well, what it's gonna do is, again, in 1994, we embarked on a impact fee system here. And what that's gonna do is either tell us that our impact fee system is working accordingly, and therefore, the assessments that we make on there are gonna be unchanged, or it's gonna take a look at and say, you know what, cost of construction, cost improvements to this corridor, based on what we foresee the needs to be in the future, are gonna go up, therefore, our assessment's gonna go up.
The impact fee assessment?
Impact fee assessment, correct.
And we, is there a legal requirement that we have to correlate that to what the impact will be?
It's a rational nexus. So as developments occur on the corridor, and there's a rational nexus based on the trips, the new development and the trips that are gonna be generating that impact, yes, then we can assess that. But it has to bear that rational nexus to the impact that they're creating.
So is there potential recoupment here? You look at a situation where you come in and say, "Woodmont could grow this exponentially." All those user fees or impact fees go up? And we're recouping that 75 over the next number of applicants?
Well, we, actually, what we would be necessarily recouping at 75,000, but we will be getting their share of their impact on the corridor through the assessment of the impact fees. So whether that's 30%, 40%, or 50% share, meaning that is basically the existing traffic, the town or the public bears 50% of the cost, but the, based on the new projected development that could occur on this corridor, then that's gonna be, that could be buried by the private sector through the assessment of the impact fee.
This is a way to kind of update the assessment of impact fees, really.
Correct. That's what.
To legitimize it. You can't just say, "Well, yeah, I feel like going up on the impact fees because of whatever reason." Well, now.
We have a sound methodology.
They showed there's a stress, and they've done the, done the study. This is a way to actually impact that number.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, this looks like one of those articles that would be really tempting to just skate past and not pay too much attention to. But I'm very aware of the pressures that will be coming to Lunandary between the 93 expansion and the development at the north end of town, the new access road up there. So I would really encourage the voters to think about this very seriously. It has been a long time since this has been updated. Woodmont is going to be bringing tremendous pressure at that Exit 4 area, and we need to be sure that we're prepared as we get ready to develop further up 102, that we really have our ducks in order, and we know what is gonna be benefiting the community, rather than go ahead with development that we haven't thought out and then have to go back and make corrections later. I think this is a great way to prepare us for the next phase of that Run Route 102.
And I wish I could take credit for this, but the town has thought about this way ahead, way ahead of me. So again, this is a system that's been in place since 1994, and we're just trying to keep up with the work that needs to be done to keep it going into the future.
Thank you.
Sean, just a real, just a real quick question for you, Andre. 102 is a state, is a state road. Is there any contribution expected from the state?
That's almost, it depends. You know, having done this, once we do the study, again, we can always identify what the needs of the corridor are, and then petition through our metropolitan planning organization, which is Southern Hampshire Planning Commission and the people that sit on that, to try to get that on the 10-year plan, to get funded and updated. And if that happens, then obviously, and the state does it, then we can do away with this and have the state upgrade, update their corridor. So on the other hand, if we're successful in getting at least the private share, then we can use that private share, and we're, much like we did on Route 28, where we got a grant for the upgrade of Page Road and Route 28, we can use, we pay for that by the portion of impact fees, which are collective towards that, towards that impact anyways, against the grant. And we're able to pay for that with limited impact from the, from the taxpayer.
Just a quick question, Andre. There's been some scuttlebutt in town, and I, you know, so we can address it on something we're supposed to spend our money on. There was a rumor going around town that impact fees may be subject to challenge if they're made on a state highway. Is, can you just educate us on that? Is that, is there some validity, or is that just a red herring that people are throwing around?
I have a question for the town manager.
Okay, whomever, but I had heard that, you know, people throwing that around lately. And I frankly don't know what the answer is, so.
Yeah, you know, there's been a lot of varying opinions of what's a lot of the impact fees. So we met with our town attorney last month, who essentially set it straight. One area we should take a look at is the composition of the various factors in our state highway impact fees. Essentially, the rule of thumb is that it's not confirmed that we can assess a fee for the roadway, but as far as the intersection improvements, that would be, that would be ineligible and appropriate. an eligible and appropriate expense for our impact fee. So Andre's currently looking back at the past studies and making some recommendations as to how those should be adjusted to better reflect the guidance we received from town council.
That was a question I was going to ask you, if it's somebody sitting on a corner, whether it's the impact concern, the cross street rather than the highway.
Yeah, that's absolutely, that's correct.
So the only, the only question mark may be those properties that are wholly on a state highway.
Well, it's not so much the front of the state highway, it's the, it's the allocation of costs for the stretch of state highway between intersections.
Okay.
Because if you developed on a, on a straightaway, you still may have some impact on the intersections up and down, you know, either side of you, so. But that's, that's an area which Andre's looking at with his staff to make the appropriate recommendations of plan for, for revisions.
So we've kind of built the contingency and so if there is any kind of change in where we're going with this, we've accounted for it.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thanks.
And you've taken into consideration a new study.
Okay. Any public comment for Article 9, Route 102 corridor study cap?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as I'm requesting the council to consider finding ways in the operating budget to get us to default, I'd ask in a similar vein that we try not to put anything else on the warrant that we really don't need to. And even though it's small money, a cup of coffee argument can be made very easily. We know how many cups we're up to at this point. I think this is an article that we can go without, given the situation that we're in. There's two new articles this year, as Dave's explained. One is for the, the new capital reserve for the fire equipment that fits the core mission of town government. I think this is one that we should save the 45,000 and hopefully add that to what you're going to reduce from the operating budget. So I'm not in favor of this one. I think it's too much. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead.
When, when Woodmont comes to town, there'll be several thousand more people driving around looking for coffee and I think we should get ready for them.
Okay, thanks. One thing coming from my point of view is I tend to agree with Mike that this might be something that we might forego this year and maybe consider next year, but that'll be up to the board, but that's just something to consider. Any other questions from the community? No? Okay. One quick thing before we go to Article 10. Council Dolan just wanted to remind people, for the two weeks after Christmas and New Year's, the trash pickup will be delayed one day. So if you are picked up on Monday, you will be picked up till Tuesday and that goes accordingly. So your, whatever your day is, bump it out one day and that'll be what your pickup day will be. So just wanted to remind everybody. Thank you to Council Dolan. Okay, moving on. Article 10, land use change tax allocation. Dave?
Yeah, we are anticipating a petition warrant article. We've not yet received one, but we do know that the, the subject will be whether to continue to dedicate 100% of the land use change tax to the conservation fund or to somehow split that between the conservation fund and the general fund.
Okay.
And I was told today by one of the petitioners that the petition should be delivered to Town Hall in the immediate near future, well before the January 10th deadline.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
I proposed one too. It differs from, from that. And that has a flat number instead of a varying number, which, you know, at the outset is $10,000. And what I'd like to say about it is, is I think we need to consider the, the change in the allocation of land use change tax for a number of reasons. One is, which is the Woodmont and its, its chain pool providing a very large amount of money to the town. But secondly, and frankly, more importantly, is the open space task force report we just got. If you look at the one they have just issued versus the one, the previous one, they were looking to have, I think, 25% as minimum of the town protected under conservation. They now currently have 31 and a half percent. So they've exceeded their plans from the, from the prior report. The new report changes the standard to a different number. So, you know, I don't know what, what the reason is for the change, but I think at a minimum, we can say that the plan by their own admission has been achieved. And I think it's now time to start looking towards returning these funds to the general fund.
Let's tell them. Motion? A motion? Sure.
I have to move that we close the public hearing?
Okay. You got a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second? Although Davis, you can be saying aye?
Aye.
Although oppose? Okay, what's affirmative? Five zero. All right.
Actually, you have everything you, you have everything you need, Dave?
Well, what I would, what I would like is, a couple of things, is let's fast forward to the 28th for a minute. December 28th is dedicated exclusively to budgets. You have a bond hearing. You have to finalize your warrant, which is essentially what you've seen today, plus Tom's proposal on current use tax came in after it was posted, you have to discuss that. You also have to look at the collective bargaining agreements, which we have three, we believe. We have two, which is approved at the council and one on, on the warrant, on the agenda for tonight, LA EA, the town administrative personnel. And so the goal of the 28th is to come out of, come out of that meeting with a recommended budget for the final public hearing. The only missing piece is any petition warrant articles received by January 10th.
So Dave, what do you need tonight?
So tonight, what I need hopefully is, is some, some further direction as to what's the target operating budget the council would like me to work on and different areas. For example, John raised the issue of $200,000. Also, I've heard about priorities of being overtime, funding overtime and gas, any kind of input I can receive so I can sort of economize the council's time for December 28th, give me different options to look at.
Dave, aren't you, aren't you looking at, or wasn't it also mentioned that we would need another article in case Article Number Two doesn't go through with the bond issue?
Well, right. I mean, the other issue is I think it provided the council with additional information, so you need to tell me whether you need more information on that issue. I think you have, I think you have information on that which would allow you folks to make a positive decision on that, but if you don't let me know. Developing a warrant article for that is very easy. It's going to be a capital reserve fund.
I meant, say for instance, that this bond issue fails. Can we have another one that says if this Article Number Two fails, then we would like to do, we would like you to vote on whether or not you want to...
That's an option which you have, which has been confirmed by DRA.
So we have to make that decision pretty soon too, right?
The 28th.
Okay. Just keep that in the back of your mind because obviously we...
So I think the, the operating budget number that we're asking, that I brought up, and I don't know if everybody else agrees with it, is $26,598,867 is what I, would be 200,000 over default.
So you need that tonight?
Well, I don't need it legally tonight, but it would help us prepare for the 28th meeting, which hopefully will economize your time on the 28th.
So you just need a preparation number?
Right, exactly.
Because although that, although we talked about earlier, I talked about the areas that would get up to 300,000, you know, we've also talked about items that were underneath default, that were possibly over budgeted from last year, that we could bring that $300,000 that I indicated or $200,000 that John indicated to be under default. So I think that's, I know I'm throwing a lot of curveballs in, but are we actually, are we actually, if you, if you take the, the library, if you take the, you know, the cable access and you take XYZ, ABC, are you at a few under default even now?
So, I'm going to pass the gavel to Joe. So I'm going to tell you what I'm thinking, instead of saving it for the end. After looking through this agonizingly, I think where I'm at is default and minus whatever you can without losing any people. And here's my reasoning. If we hope to pass some of the articles on the, on Election Day, I think that we should give the residents the best, and what I mean is the best budget we can in hopes of achieving a better staffing for the fire department and funding the, the special revenue accounts. So I think in order to do that, I think if we could come in somewhere under default, again, without losing any staffing, I would be more comfortable with that.
The only problem I see what that is, is that we're going to have to put a fictitious number in for overtime then to get below default.
Well, not necessarily. And the reason I say that is one of my proposed cuts is looking at library.
I understand, but we have under budgeted in overtime historically by hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think that if we put in what's the real number and then you want to try to get below default, fine. I mean, that's what I'm trying to do at the $200,000 over. What's the real number? Let's not, let's, let's stop kidding ourselves because if, if the real number is $600,000 and, you know, and we put in 400 and we say, hey, that's great, we're below default. Okay? Or is the answer that we have to cut people to get below default?
And not to throw Mr. John because under the bus, but he just sets a number of $300,000 with the library as an example. Now, don't fall off your chair of people that are, you know, still, still up and then thinking about the library, but maybe if that number's closer to 100 or 200, even say 200 for it, just, just, just to talk, 200 plus another 100 in the cable, that's 370 on the, if you guys come back and say, yeah, you know, charities at home this year, you know, so that's 370. You know, and as you look at these items, that maybe you could find even more things that were, we could save on from last year's budget. And that's how you get to pay for, John, the gas and the overtime. And that's why I thought it was really important to kind of like be able to say, hey, you know what, with these savings, you can then identify that money and earmark that money to go towards overtime and earmark that money to go towards these other items like gasoline that we were talking about.
If you take another 100 of that cable, you're going to be down to one person in the cable department.
No, no, no.
Oh, I think he's saying 100.
The 100, the 100. Because right now...
The 104,000. That's already in there.
It's already in there.
Yeah. That's in there. Actually, it's in revenue.
Last year, last year, we were $325,000 over and overtime.
It's in the revenue.
I think the rub...
Don't try to be a jerk, we've got to deal with it.
I think the rub that you're going to keep going up against is sooner or later, we have to face the reality that things cost what they cost. If we want the services we have in this town, it costs money. Artificially try to get below some number because we want to, you know, because we think that that's what they're going to vote for. I think Council Farrell has a valid point and, look, let's, let's face reality, put in there what, what it should be, whatever that is, make an argument, put it to the voters and it is what it is.
And if you don't put it to the voters, then fine. Then we have to make some hard cuts and it's not, it's not simple anymore. It's people. You got to cut personnel if you want to really get the blow default and hold it there.
You can't cut any more people. We've done this game, we've done this game for, I can't even tell you how long.
But we can't keep saying we're going to do overtime and it's $325,000 more than what we've budgeted for. We're, you know, we're playing a budgeting game.
It's unrealistic is what it really turns out to be.
I mean, doesn't it make sense to...
Why, here's my point. Every year we, sorry, Tom. Every year we have this damn debate, but nobody, everybody challenges us to cut and do everything we can to maintain services without cutting our special interests, but the other side of the pocket spends what they want and nobody says a word.
It's because they come in below default every year.
It's a bogus number. It's still a goddamn increase.
Because they, they've been doing this for 10 years and have figured it out. We're in year one. They have to be in year one at some point too. Right? If we, if we want to, if we're going to put a fictitious number in for, for the numbers, fine. Let's understand that's what we did.
I guess my, my thought is that we put in, to use somebody else's terminology, maybe Tom, you know, we put in what, what it takes to run, we believe it takes to run the government. And we have a new, we have a new process this year. We have a deliberative session. So if, if the voters come to the deliberative session and believe that it needs to be less to go on the ballot, then they'll make it less. I mean, at that point, it's their, it becomes their number. And if we say, listen, we, we just told you what we think it's going to take to run the town. If you want something less than that, then by all means, do it. But I think if we come with a number that's not what it takes to run the town and we lead people to believe that we can do it for that, then I think we run the risk of misleading them at the deliberative session. So I would, I would say, I mean, you're right, I think we should scrub it and wire brush it so there's no fat in it. But on the other hand, if we understate the budget, then the deliberative session is, they're starting off with a, with a, with a number that's not real.
Agreed.
That's the only reason I meant the 200,000. We can still slash the 200,000, but let's find out what the real, if the real, you know, there's not $70,000 in the, in the charitable. There's 63 and 45 of it were offsetting welfare. I mean, come on. I, we've played this nickel and dime game for years. With $325,000 over on overtime, that's pretty bad budgeting.
But it get paid for somewhere. It was a bottom line budget, so where did it come from?
Exactly. Well, it did come from somewhere.
Let me give you an example, is the, is the fire department's small equipment capital fund. Those, those are questions from the fire department and when you got to cover overtime, you don't replace that equipment on a timely basis. Things like that throughout the budget.
I have a question. I hate to throw, you know, water on the flame here, but since we're talking about trying to be realistic with budgeting, this is an expenditure number, but a revenue number. Interest investments earned $36,000 in 2011. You budgeted, I think, 250,000 that year. Budgeted again 250,000 in 212.
It's Santa Claus time, maybe.
I, I don't think interest rates have taken a huge leap in the last year, so the only other way you're getting the money up is if you got a whole bunch of more money in the undesignated fund balances.
We're down, we're down that estimate to 150 now whereby we, realistically, we collected about $700,000 six years ago.
I was going to, I was going to ask you if I could get my gasoline there too.
What we're trying to do is project the interest rates, you know, between nine and 24 months ahead of where we are. And so we've been trying to balance and get that number down to a realistic number. That's what we've been doing.
What I'm asking is, is 150 realistic? I mean, if your actuals in 2011 are 36.
Looking, looking at today's rates, no, it's not.
Okay.
Look what it's projected to possibly be, it might be, but you know, 150 is a lot closer than 350 we had a couple of years ago.
So it's another fictitious number.
Well, yeah, it is. You know, it doesn't affect the Article Four, but it affects reality, you know.
I mean, you know, we've been, we've been short on motor vehicle permit fees, but we keep, all the industry standards are telling us that there's a pent-up demand for vehicles because people haven't been trading their vehicles. We haven't seen that yet. We expect to see it soon. We ratcheted down our estimate, I believe from last year, or was it two years ago we ratcheted down and put this one back up again. It's just, it's an estimate we think the economy's going to do between nine and 24 months old.
So now I'm up to 425,000 and, you know, and that's fictitious. Right? That's bodies.
And your highway block grant number is down 81,000 in revenue. Highway block grants between 2012 and 2013. That's your estimated revenue.
What's the number on that now?
525. It's 82,000, 82,000 less than what you budgeted in 2012.
No, because that hasn't been completed. We've been on track with that, but next, the FY, the FY 13 number is now 506. We received that from the state last week. It was originally supposed to be 606. If, if you folks recall, you used to play, you used to pay a $3 surcharge to the state for the emergency motor vehicle. And the legislature eliminated that, so we received this last week, that our share will be 506 for FY 13. So that one will be adjusted because we know what the number is. They give us a number, they do adjust it somewhat. I would go through the fiscal year, it doesn't vary that much, but their beginning of the fiscal year estimate is pretty accurate. And we lost $100,000 on that one last week.
Thanks, Dave.
So we're down 500K. All right. So where do you guys want to start?
Yeah, but John, he didn't, he didn't give you the number on the, on the motor vehicle permit fee.
Yeah, we're up a little on that.
So all I'm saying to you is... So all I'm saying to you is, is that we can definitely give Dave direction by department where to cut personnel. You know, you can say, Dave, at least one out of Public Works. No, but we can actually, you know, I'm just kidding around with that stuff, okay? But we'd have to go down and say, okay, Dave, we want, we want this all in personnel and we want it out of the, anything but the big three departments. And then he's got to go find it. I mean, we're allowed to give him that kind of direction, but we have to know what real numbers are. And if we, if we run real numbers on this thing, we're talking about letting people go. That's where you're going to be below default because then, because then we got to scrub them down to be real.
I, I just don't think it's realistic to be below default. Well, I'm starting to get that impression.
I'm not saying don't keep beating on it.
Yes, we're trying to push it. You know, we're just going to keep questioning what, you know, what could bring it, bring it up, you know?
Well firstly, I would like to apologize for swearing or cussing.